Well, we'll get rid of the, we'll get rid of the other stuff first. Oh, excuse me. Okay, we're calling to order the regular planning commission, Malibu City Planning Commission meeting, August 5th, 2024. This meeting is being held both in a hybrid format and allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely by Zoom. In-person participants, if you would like to speak, please submit a request to speak form to the clerk before the item is called. Only in-person participants may donate time to others. Remote participants, if you would like to speak, please raise, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when you wish to be called. Commissioners, if, when you have comments, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we can make the meeting discussions clear into the public. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Peak is absent at the moment. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I'm here.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Here.
Chair Mazza?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Don, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sir. The Pledge of Allegiance, to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, verity, and justice for all.
Okay, may we have a report on posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on July 26, 2024.
Thank you very much. We have no ceremonial presentations tonight. Now it's written in oral communications with the public. Do we have any public speakers for items not on the agenda?
We do not have any in-person speakers and I do not see any hands raised in the virtual meeting at this time.
Okay, we're going to close the public hearing and open it to planning commissioner comments and then staff comments. Anybody wish to speak? Yes.
Okay, I'll go with the happy stuff first. I had birthdays with my beautiful daughter-in-law, Crystal, and my son will be, his birthday is this week, and we celebrated at their home in La Mesa down in San Diego over the weekend. And then two of my beautiful grandchildren coming up, they will be five this coming next week, so we're going to celebrate that next week down, or this, the end of this week down in San Diego, so making those trips. The other thing that I heard talking, Hans talking about was the undergrounding of the power. Now, I've spoken about this a few times. It's just, really, the bottom line is, it's just not that easy. It doesn't matter if they're doing it in Topanga or not, it's just not that easy. And they have to decide where they're going to put it. Now, you got, you know, you got bluff stuff that's moving over there, you've got the water line on the, on the water side, they're going to have to figure all that stuff out. Their Caltrans is mapping where all the houses are on PCH. You know, 90% of those houses are in the Caltrans right-of-way, so you've got that fight that's going to happen about who gets to keep what. And then when you start to underground, as I've said before, you're going to be in the right-of-way. And a lot of people in our beautiful city have gone into the right-of-way with their walls, fences, landscaping, everything else. That, they have the right to take out and don't have to pay you back. So it'll be interesting to see what happens here, but I appreciated Hans bringing that up, but I, it's, if they do it, I guess they can probably try and figure out doing that out through the canyon. You know, we have a lot of moving ground here, so we'll see what happens, but just, just my thought. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'd like to just comment on that. You're on, I'm last.
Okay, a question for staff and a comment, and I don't know, this might be for Mr. Tony or possibly for Tyler. Just, if, if there's an update on short-term rentals, remind us where we stand with coastal. I know that's been kind of in a gray area for a while, and I'm wondering if there's an anticipated date when we might see something. And then my comment, I think it was the la, the last meeting, I'd said it would be impossible to fill Richard Malika's shoes, and several other folks picked up that phrase, and it, I meant to literally, like, whoever we find is likely to have a really steep learning curve here in this city, our general plan, rustic values, et cetera. The nice gentleman we almost had, had, did not have any coastal zone experience, so it seems it may take a while to find the right person. And just to make a note that the planning department could be in transition for a while, and it's going to be up to all of us. The commission interested residents to help sort of train the new management in what is unique about Malibu. And, you know, just to say, I'll, I'll try to make this short, but we're going to have new folks, it'll be on all of us to help them understand how this town works, and that we became a silly city legally, just so we would not become a city aesthetically, and that planning things is not always a one-to-one synonymous with building things, and that Malibu, a way of life, is not just an old bumper sticker. So I'll leave it at that, and maybe somebody will answer my question.
Okay, well, we'll do that in staff comment. I just want to comment on Mr. Smith's comment about undergrounding. Seven years ago, I tried to underground Zumaraz, which is 38 houses, totally flat. And what people don't realize is there's more than electricity on the telephone poles. So the electric company wanted $250,000 to take a look, then they wanted $2 million to underground, and then the other utilities wanted another million to move the cable TV, et cetera. So it is beyond expensive. The other point to make is anybody who's been through a fire here, Skyler included, knows that the dangerous fires in Malibu start up-country from us. They don't start down where our houses are, usually. And by the time they hit us, they have a very wide front, and it is virtually impossible to underground high-tension lines that are going through canyons that are thousands of feet deep and then back up the other side. And that's why they have these big giant poles. And so, don't count on it, is what I'm saying, and Skyler?
I just think, I think it's important for people to know, as somebody with a lot of experience actually undergrounding power lines at, at times, that Edison provides a way for people to do that when they're interested in that. The hard thing, as John mentioned, is the cost associated with that. It gets very expensive, and there are the, you have two different communications providers, and that's provided that you're dealing with poles that don't have cell towers. So there's, it is complicated, but Edison does have a means and way of going about that process. Usually you deal with the power company before you deal with the communications companies. What I would encourage Mr. Tony to request from Edison is maybe some information from them that they could come and present to the city council, not necessarily us, to provide the residents with that info. I know that they have some funding that's going to go into undergrounding some poles up Topanga. I saw them, I think, doing some work up Canaan. I don't know if that's specifically for residents, or that has to do with the wildfire mitigation that they're looking at. But as John mentioned, the poles that are of greater concern for fire danger would be the ones that are up the canyon. The concern that oftentimes is a greater aesthetic concern would be those that are blocking views and down on the highway and in the residential neighborhoods. So hopefully, you know, people can take that information and that helps them. But I know when I was on the council, we looked at trying to get it done for most of the city, maybe doing a state revolving fund loan or something like that to, to underground the entire city. But you're looking at somewhere around, I think it's about a million and a half a mile. And that's when it's relatively simple stuff and not including all of the communications. So when the other things get involved with that, if you were to, to try to underground all of Malibu, you'd probably be 1.5 billion or something like that. So I don't think that's happening anytime soon, but if Malibu and the residents all wanted that and made that a priority, we could impose that on ourselves, that could be paid through our property taxes, and we could do that. So that's an option that the community has, but that would have to be driven by the council. And I think it's a hard thing to swallow. That, I think, the last time we ran numbers on that, it was about, I want to say $75,000 to $100,000 a home, and it varies, because some people don't have current underground service going to their home. So there's additional cost on top of that per home, and that's what starts to get scary for people, especially for people that have been in their homes for a long time and don't want the burden of that expense. So I'm just providing information, and that's that.
Anybody else? Okay, I made an error, and I did not have the approval of the agenda, so we will do that before we have staff comments. Anybody have a motion to make?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I would like to amend that to include continuing item 7A of item 5C to a date uncertain, which is what staff indicated they recommended.
If, I'm willing to accept that, but if we're going to continue 7A, I'd like that to be the first item.
No, not 7A. I, I'm sorry, it's 5C, and I spoke.
5C.
The one that's already marked for continuing.
So that's probably a good idea, then.
Okay.
So, now, I wonder too, it looks like we have a pretty long agenda, and 5D, near the end, there's some uncertainty there about some data we've asked for, and I wonder if it would be prudent to say they could go home now, or do we want to let, make them wait around?
Maybe, I hate to make them wait around, but I think that by nine o'clock, we should make a decision on that based on how we're moving.
Okay, so let's, let's. The original motion is continue 5C and everything else is the same. Okay, can we have consensus?
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we have staff comments.
Yes, Commissioner Mazza and commissioners, don't have an update right now on short-term rentals, but we'll take a look at that and try to provide an update at the next meeting. And we'll definitely reach out to SCE to see if that's something they can provide on undergrounding. Obviously, I am not the planning director, I am the assistant city manager, so I'm here helping out the planning department and acting in the near term, but we hope to have an interim planning director as soon as possible. So hopefully, sooner rather than later. Do have a quick update that we learned today. California Coastal Commission was supposed to hear an item from the MRCA on beach access that has been postponed from requests of the MRCA, so we don't have a date yet on that, but we will get an update. The housing element, so we will have the housing element in front of you on August 19th, and then go to council on September 23rd. And September 23rd is the date that that has to be resolved by, based on a settlement we reached with the state. So we are working hard on that item, right, as we speak. Topango, Topanga Lagoon Restoration Project, final EIR and preferred project, has been released, so members of the public are encouraged to comment on that up until August 13th. The next step will be hearings held by the county and state to finalize the project and to certify the EIR, and information can be found at topangalagoonrestoration.org. And then as a small heads-up, we're not changing anything right now, but we do want to try to provide the best possible service to this commission and provide answers to your questions collectively and holistically as we can. So probably down the road, we'll look at trying to put some structure around how we receive questions and provide answers to this body so that the entire commission has all of the answers to any questions we receive, so that you all have the same information to deliberate on for your policy decisions at the commission meeting. So at a later date, we'll probably come back with some structure to that. And those are my updates.
Craig?
Yeah, just, you know, we've had some talk about whether it would be prudent or possible to have reports done an extra week in advance, so there'd be more time to sort things out. That might play into what you just said, that maybe there'd be a time where we cut off both people, comments, public comments, and cutoff questions from commissioners, so we can just, like, have a few days to sort through everything that we have before we actually go into the meeting. Just a, just a thought.
Okay, just a thought on that is, I asked that question once before of our city attorney, and he said, no uncertain terms, and you may want to weigh in on this, that there's no way you can cut off public comment before a hearing.
Well, coastal does it a week in advance, so there must be some way.
Okay, well, that was the answer then. Now, on, Craig brings up an important point. We have the housing element coming, and I'm sure it's probably pretty thick, pretty complicated. And hopefully, we can get that at least the Friday before the Friday, the last Friday, and, and Craig brings up a, a very good point. I would say in the last six months, we probably had five or six times where we didn't get staff reports before Wednesday of the week before, the four days before. And it just flat-out doesn't give us time to actually go visit a site, read the staff report, ask staff questions, and, and be prepared for Monday. It's just impossible. So I think administratively, you should consider maybe skipping a week sometime and then have a three-week period where we have at least a week to, extra to contemplate the staff reports and ask questions to get answers. That's the end of my comments, or my questions. Oh, Drew, go ahead.
I was looking on the city's website, aren't some of the responses and recent middles on the housing element posted on the city's website?
Yeah, malibu city.org/housingelement, there's a plethora of information available. There should be comments there. We had already provided, as a city, our comments on the draft EIR. This is now at the draft final stage, so they're looking for comments from the public.
Just to your statements, I, I don't know, I don't think we can take more time in between. We may have to narrow down our meetings a little bit, but we can't, we can't let our, the people of our city wait much, any longer than they have to. We're obviously short-staffed, everybody's trying real hard, but we may just, maybe our meetings aren't quite as big and we just keep, keep moving. We got to just, we got to keep moving. We've got people here that, that need to try and get things done.
I just want to comment on that. I did not mean to, what I meant was, say, say we have a four, a three Friday month, a three Monday month, staff has an extra week there, and if they could just get a week ahead, then in the future, we could have extra time to, to actually read our staff reports and, and get questions answered. Skyler?
Well, I kind of, I think the bottom line of what you're saying is, is very frustrating to make a decision on something when you get a lot of information at the last minute. And I recognize that oftentimes, when I was on the city council, that happened too, and it becomes very difficult. But you're also in this role for a reason, and you have to take the time to do that. I think if the city wanted to make some sort of a policy where, you know, that a staff report's not coming out 10 days in advance, you know, or a minimum of a week in advance, that that item should probably get pushed to meeting. And I don't, I, I say that lightly, but I also say that it's, that's sometimes the only way for us to give the public a fair hearing. And I think that that's more the crux of what, what you're getting at, because that's sometimes when we get the hearings that take forever, because we're getting all that information, and then we're cycling back through questions and everything else, because we haven't had that time that you're referencing. So I, I, I think that that's not, that's not falling on deaf ears, should I say.
That's exactly what I meant. We're now going to consent items. Are there any items to be polled?
I have two.
Okay, what are they?
3A1, where's my other page? 3A1 and 3B1 for question.
Can we approve the consent calendar pulling item 3A1 and 3B1?
I have one, I got to figure out which one it is.
The ones I'm pulling, 3A1 is Cuthbert, 3B1 is Horizon Drive.
Okay, and I'm going to pull 3A3.
So 3A1, 3A3, and 3B1 polled, and yes, you're good.
We do have a couple of hands raised in the meeting. They raised during commissioner comments, so I'm not sure if they were hoping to provide public comment, or if they're asking for something to be pulled on consent, so if we could just check in with them.
I'm sorry, I missed, check in with who?
We have two raised hands in the Zoom meeting. The hands went up during commission comments, so I'm not certain if they were trying to speak under, under public comment yet, but they didn't raise until after it closed.
Well, and then they missed out.
Right, but I also don't know if they were trying to get their hand up early for the consent item to pull something, but we could check.
Let's ask if consent, if there's anybody for consent item. We also have 3A1, we have a speaker, okay?
Liliger, Damascus?
Oh, I thought you, did, did anybody want to speak on that?
It would be to pull a consent item, if, if the public wants to pull.
Yes, I'm asking, are they open? Can they hear me?
They're not responding.
They're not responding, okay? Then, they're not responding. Okay, so we're going to 3A1 first, and that is Cuthbert.
Did we get consent to pass everything else yet? No.
No.
So we're pulling 3A1, 3A3, and 3B1. Are we good on everything else?
Yeah.
Yes?
You said we have to vote on the minutes, correct?
Okay, so can I make a motion to?
Actually, recently, they won. Actually, recently, they, they changed that procedure unless Kellen wants to say differently that we could accept that as a consent item is by consensus.
Correct. Okay, so we can, everybody consent to the, everything but 3A1, 3B1.
You good, Rebecca?
And could I get somebody to officially second? Well, you started off with a motion. That's where I'm getting tripped. I'll just switch it to a consensus.
Consent.
Consent, pulling 3A1, 3A3, 3B1.
Okay. What do you need to do?
I thought she said I needed a second.
No. Okay, so we're off to 3A1. And that was pulled by Craig, correct?
Yes.
And let's have, do we need, let's have a brief staff report and then we'll?
Do we need a staff report?
Well, it's up to you. You're the one that pulled.
I don't need a report. I have a question and we have a speaker.
Okay, so let's have the speaker first. And that is? It's a speaker asking, oh, it's here just for questions, okay? Does Janik? Don Bruhna want to speak? No.
Yannick, do you want to come and speak or do you just want to answer questions?
I want to answer questions.
Great.
Okay, so Craig, you're on.
Okay.
It's before we start, sorry. This is the item that was on last time. And so it's the approval of the resolution. If we're gonna go down, it's, the only thing we can really go into that's on the agenda is approval of the resolution to confirm what we said last time is correct in the resolution and to approve that. This isn't a public hearing. It's not on for, you know, further debate. So I just want to put that out there before we go on to the?
Thank you. Fully understood. I'm just asking for clarifications on what we did. Not least because I heard from the public that this will very likely be appealed. So it just seemed like it would be helpful to clarify the record that one thing we did not address, and I don't know if we did something illegal or not here, but the way this went in a two-step process with the Woolsey PV and then they later came back and added much more with the regular CDP, we basically grandfathered the location of the Woolsey close to this, within the 100-foot buffer. And we never looked at the development area as if it were a new house, which with Woolsey, you get up to 110%. But then with this, we went way beyond that and called it a new house, in which case we probably should have looked at the overall development area. So the question is whether, can we just go ahead having ignored that issue? It was never in the staff report. It was, you know, or, and let the potential appellant sort that out? That's one question. I have one other question. So did that make sense, Tyler?
Yeah, it makes sense. So, I mean, I don't want to get too much into the merits of the project.
Right.
So I don't know if we can reopen the discussion. I think, I think they would need to, you would need to come back with a separate item. Is that right?
Well, the question is just, can we can just move ahead with it without having looked at that component?
Yeah, it was reviewed. I know what you're saying. If it was a brand-new home, let's say, totally never developed, and it was within proximity to Esha, there may be a development area requirement. In this case, it was a rebuild. So they were allowed to get their nonconforming rights back. And this specific application was in addition to the approved home.
So it's not like, we have the, the question is why doesn't this fall under the 50% remodel rule then? If you have the first house that's PV plus, you know, 110% and then you're coming back effectively doing a remodel, are you doing a 50%? Or are you doing more than 50%, which is what happened here? In which case, you call it a new house and apply all the new code?
50% square footage or 50% demolition of existing walls?
Uh huh, okay.
Those are two separate issues. That's why I'm just curious what, where you're going. I also don't want to get too much into the weeds because our city attorney is looking at me like?
Yeah, 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 no, I know, I know. I just, okay, that's a good point. That's a good distinction. And maybe we can hang our hat on that, right? That it's not about the demolition of the first one. That, okay, all right. The second question is on the deed restriction. Talk, it's written in there that private parties, and it's a little, to me, it's unclear about what private parties. And is this like, I think of it as this is like a contract and it doesn't say who it's between.
Well, I have the same question. And that is, that's, just so you know, that's condition number 89.
Yes.
And my question of the city attorney was, does private party, is that a general term of law? Or do you have to name who the private party is? In other words, could the associations save turtles? Be part of that just, or is it just the neighbors? Or is it what? Because if it's?
Well, the issue with this is we can't, as the city, be putting conditions on the private party because it's against state law for us to restrict this. This was an offer from the applicant. And so it's fully on them. So we shouldn't, it's hard to even discuss this because it pushes us into a mandate from the city, which the city cannot mandate.
But no, but that's not my question. My question is, the term in the condition is, they are supposed to have a condition between private parties.
Correct.
Now, that could be them and their cousin, unless there is a term of law that says private parties mean something.
Like the neighbors are?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
That wasn't our intent and that wasn't what this condition was for.
Right, and this has to be provided to the planning department prior to approval. So I think the, you know, the Save the Turtles Foundation idea is going to be vetted prior to?
But they're not lawyers, how do they know?
What's that question?
In other words?
They're not lawyers.
We intended to give private individuals a way to?
Yes.
Have an agreement. But, so we put out a condition that says private parties. But my question is, does private parties mean anything? And the planning department aren't lawyers, so they wouldn't know that. So can we say all private parties within a mile? Or can we say all private parties that are citizens of the United States?
Because we, the city can't be putting these conditions on this. The fact that it's even in here is coming up right up to the line of what is legally allowable. So going down this road?
Well, no, I'm not asking you anything about a condition. Just who would be included in what they decide is the condition.
Again, this is not something the city can be even asking these questions about technically because it's a, it was an offer from the applicant.
So the offer meant nothing. They could have it with their dog and their two private parties.
If you, if anything ever wants to be that, you know, outrageous, people can do that. But, you know, the staff understands what the condition was. So when they're reviewing it, they will make sure it's not with the Save the Turtles Foundation. It's with the parties that the applicant has made the offer to.
Mr. City Attorney, haven't we discussed all this? And really, we're just here to just keep this thing moving? They could have asked those questions the first round?
That is correct.
Thank you.
No, we didn't discuss it because this is the condition, the words in the condition.
Exactly.
And they aren't clear.
It doesn't seem to reflect what we thought we were saying.
Skylar, you're on.
So if I may, if what I'm hearing from the city attorney is that the city can't require that condition on there, we might want to reword this to say that the applicant is required to execute and record that. Because that sounds to me like the city is requiring that. Right, and it's an odd thing here because you have an applicant that offered something essentially to their neighboring properties, the way that I understood it, right? To prevent these kind of uses there, right? That alleviated a lot of neighbors' concerns. And that was the goal. But the city can't require that. So my question is, are you okay with the way that this is worded now that it's been brought up? Do you need to make a change to that? Or are we good?
Let's hear from Tyler.
I don't know if Kellen wants to speak first. I was gonna say, I remember, I wasn't the author of this condition, but I remember this condition being different because city attorney said that we couldn't record it. So I thought that this was supposed to come back as basically the city was supposed to accept the document that showed that this agreement had taken place. Not that we were supposed to record something on behalf of the city. So I do think that in this case, maybe it should be reworded. But I'll let Kellen speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, since it was an offer from the applicant, it can be a condition to the final approval. But we, that is all that we can say. So, I mean, it's not worded as perfectly as it could be, so.
Let's make it perfect.
Tyler, you'll be able to make it perfect?
I think if we, all we would have to do is take out, the applicant shall be required to execute and record a private party deed restriction. It would need to say, prior to planning department approval, the applicant shall provide the planning department with a copy of the agreement with ex-neighbour as the rest of it. Because if they can't reach an agreement, then there's, the project's dead again. That's part of the conditions of approval though, so the requirement of them.
So ultimately, I'm okay with approving it. If you need, you can work through that and make that correct.
It is, it is fine as is because the applicant has agreed to it. And so we're not conditioning what the deed restriction is. It's just, you know, what I would like to say is that if we can add in there that this is not something that the city can mandate or something to that effect. So however we want to word that, that it was a private offer, they're going to do it in order to gain final planning department approval. But the city is not the one telling them that they can't have an alcohol, drug, or psych recovery or sober living rehab facility.
It gives a private party civil means to stop a rehab or a sober living going into that location.
Yeah, no, my question in the beginning, and I understand, I think we are covered on to your point already because we're saying, we're not saying, we could say the city will not enforce, okay? They have to be private enforcement.
Correct.
But my question, Drew, was, what is a private party? Okay, and there is apparently no, no term in law that what a private party is. So somehow, I guess you leave it up to a staff person in the planning department to see if it's sufficient.
Let me, how about if we approach it as a hypothetical here? If they end up making it into a rehab or a sober living, can someone on Point Dume take civil action against that?
Yes.
There you go.
Well, I wonder why you say that, yes? Because what if the private party agreement says, I agree with these seven people? Done. And it doesn't include Point Dume or it doesn't include a neighbor, one neighbor they don't like?
Well, this is a restriction on the actual property itself. And so to enforce a deed restriction, you have to have standing. So the turtle people probably would not have standing to say?
But would somebody on Point Dume have standing?
Well, that's a legal term of art. So that's up to a court. A neighbor that lives nearby, yes. If they live a mile away, maybe. The farther you go away?
Could the staff accept something that was restricted, that said only these three people this agreement is with?
To my under-
They're next to their cousins.
To my understanding, it's on the property itself. So it's, that address, when they go to review?
Yeah, but it's on the property.
Hold on, let me finish. When it's, it's on that property. So when someone goes to buy that potentially, they run a title report. There is a deed restriction that says this property may not have these things. It's not saying, Bill, the guy next door, this is the agreement. So it's on that. So in a, you know, terrible precedent of back in the day when it said certain minorities cannot have, to buy in certain areas, it was on that property that said that. So it's not saying you couldn't sell to certain named minorities. It's saying that property is not allowed to have those minorities. So it's on that, that law.
Okay, so they can't be exclusionary in their private agreement?
Correct.
Okay, that's the only point I want to make.
And now, this is all, this is all on the record now. So if somebody really cared, they'd come back and look at this.
Chair?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to approve item 3B?
Well, we'll do it by consent?
Yeah.
Okay.
A second.
Is there any consent? Any objection to consenting to item 3B3? Okay, and then, I mean, 3B, whatever it is. And then somebody polled, what, 3B1?
I polled 3B1 for a question.
It was 3A1.
3A1, yeah. Correct, we just consented to 3A1, now 3B1?
No, now it's 3A3.
Oh, somebody else, right. That's, that's Wally's.
Oh, yes, Wally's. Yes, I think there is an error on Wally's in that, is it Wally's? Yes, we decided on Scott's, 3A2, which is their resolution, I think it's 20, their resolution 21 was what we said. One year review and then five years review. We did the same thing on Wally's. But Wally's condition number 26 does, only says five years. It doesn't say one year and five years. And we made them both the same. So I, I, I think we need to add, on Wally's number 26, condition number 26, make it read the same as condition number 21 on A, 3A2, which was Scott's, Mark.
For the record, I think I just heard, saw a nod from Wally's folks out there.
You didn't see a nod, you saw frustration at the process of being okay with it.
Well, this is purely a typo. This is purely a typo, as far as I know. So do we have any?
I think you have consensus on that change.
Okay, do we have?
Chair Mazza, we can make that update.
Sure, okay, so consent, no, no objections?
Nope.
Okay, we're?
We're done with the consent?
No, we're not.
Are we on?
3B1.
Okay, 3B1.
Yeah, this is 5520 Horizon. I had a question for the planner. I don't know that Larby's here tonight, right? So this is Tyler?
Yes.
It just, I just wondered if this was actually legal when you have two houses on one lot. One of them is nominally an ADU, but they have two separate driveways accessing two separate streets, Horizon and Cuthbert. And I just, just as a matter of form, is that, can you do that on one lot?
On the corner?
It's not even on the corner. It goes across the top, so it's like, sort of one house from the top and one house from the bottom.
Yeah, there's a, I know that there's a house that was approved off of, I think it has a Fernhill address, the same thing. It wraps around, has a driveway on Wildlife and a driveway on Fernhill.
But this is, there's actually houses to both sides of it.
And there's, correct, there's a structure on each side, and it's totally cool. The lay of the land, we call it.
Well, I think, I do believe we have a one driveway restriction in the, in the LCP.
That should be pretty easy, yes or no? I just didn't know where to look.
There, I believe they're both, would have been rebuilds. So if there was a nonconformity, they would have been allowed to reestablish the nonconforming condition that they had.
You pretty sure that they're both rebuilds?
I have to double check, but this, being a DMW, this is a.
They're in the vicinity where most things were vaporized. I would have to make that assumption, unfortunately.
This guy, that's a.
It would have a WF on it, wouldn't it?
Okay, well, in the interest of moving on, let's put it, just put an asterisk on that for future reference. Or maybe I'll just do that, so, thank you. Consent us, yes.
Consent us on consent?
Mm-hmm.
The.
Consent us.
Okay, we're on. Need to get to the right spot here. Papers.
4A.
Right now, I'm looking for 4A. Just want to read it right. Okay, we are open, opening a hearing on item 4A. Coastal Development Permit Number 22-003, variance number 22-024, variance number 23-004, site plan review number 22-029. An applicant constructed new two-story, single-family residence in associated development, including variances for encroachment into environmentally sensitive habitat areas and buffer for the construction of, on slopes steeper than 2.5 to 1, and a site plan review for heights over 18 feet up to 28 feet for a pitched roof. This was continued from July 15, 2024. Location is 20741 Los Flores Drive. May we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair. As noted, the project tonight is Coastal Development Permit Number 22-003, located at 20741 Los Flores Mesa Drive. Here's a quick look at the vicinity map with PCH to the south and roughly 10-acre property along Los Flores Mesa Drive. I won't repeat all this as the chair just went through it, but it's a two-story, single-family home with driveway, swimming pool, associated equipment, landscaping, hardscaping, grading. And as noted, the discretionary requests, one variance for the reduction in the required 100-foot ESHA buffer, one variance for construction on slopes deeper than 2.5 to 1, and a site plan review for construction over 18 feet, up to a maximum 28 feet for a pitched roof. So here's a few photos of the current site conditions. This is of the proposed building area where the house would be located. And here's a side-by-side with the story poles installed on the right. And here's a look at the site plan with the building footprint, as well as the driveway going off to the right-hand side of the property onto Los Flores Mesa Drive. Here's a look at the north elevation, which is the entrance to the house facing the driveway, and then the south elevation. And then, just to review the discretionary requests, the image on the left is the ESHA layer on the city's CIS showing the presence of ESHA along that line, that property line on the north. And then, the image on the right is from the bio-inventory report showing quite a bit of field-verified ESHA on the property itself. Verified, necessitating the variance for the ESHA. And then, here's just a quick look of the building footprint, as well as the driveway in relation to that field-verified, as well as city-identified ESHA. As it relates to the steep slopes variance, here's a color-coded slope analysis with the blue being the relatively flat portions of the lot and the red being the steep slopes. And the building is outlined and the driveway is outlined in red. And then, there in that box, that is the portion of the driveway that's being located on steep slopes that also requires retaining walls. And here's just a closer look at it. As noted in the staff report, there's a geologic setback line, so no part of the structure goes over that line. And there is an existing driveway on the site, but it cannot be utilized as it doesn't meet any LACFD standards and would need to be entirely reconstructed in order to be used for today's purposes. Now, this project was heard by the environmental review board on January 24, 2024, and the recommendations are listed here, as well as in the staff report. And also noted in the staff report, there's a project located just north of here. It's a proposed water tank that is linked to this project in the sense that currently, the project does not have a source of water. And the applicant is working with LA County to install 100,000-gallon water tank on county property to thereby serve this house, as well as others on Los Flores Mesa Drive. So any approval of this project would be conditioned on the construction of this water tank, so it could provide water service to this house. In terms of public correspondence, we received nine letters of support for this project and one letter in opposition. And staff will not be providing a recommendation for this project tonight, but we're available for questions. I believe the applicant and their team is here as well, and they're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, we need to do disclosure, disclosures. Anybody?
I met with Mr. Schmitz when this came before us last time. I didn't learn anything different than what's in the staff report.
Same, but separately, by myself, nobody else was there.
I met with Mr. Schmitz on the site. Commissioner Smith was there at the same time.
I met with the applicant on the site. John was there at the same time. Saw that a portion of the parcel closer to the road is relatively flat and could support a 10,000-square-foot-ish house with less ESHA impact, no variance required for slope, and possibly not for ESHA. I wasn't clear when grading occurred in the past and whether that was relevant, so I checked on base, found a biology review by TerraCore Resource Management in 2004 that includes photo evidence that this is a primary ridge line as of the 1950s, and I'll show that and talk more about the implications. I also looked at photos on the California Coastal Record website and Google Earth Pro historical photos. I forwarded those to the planner for his evaluation. They show that the history of the driveway grading and paving has implications regarding development area and impermeable area. I also shared with staff some photos I took of the story poles showing distinctly against the skyline from public roads. We discussed these various considerations, and I will further elaborate. I also, looking at the photos, I learned that there's a structure about the size of an ADU on the property that was not visible from where we'd been standing, but it's, the applicant acknowledges it and intends to demo it, but that's, we should have a permit for that, and that's not in front of us. Also learned from, that the applicant wants to keep the main extra driveway for drainage purposes, that they could remove the paving from the various ancillary driveways. Planner Adam said he's still researching the development area calculation in relation to the existing additional non-exempt driveway. Hopefully, he has some numbers for us on that. And at some point early in this process, I'd like to go through the photos that I, I brought that I think Parker should have ready to show, and I, I'll just talk about them a little bit, but, go ahead.
I met with Craig and Richard Weintraub and his assistant Jake on the property, and essentially saw what Craig saw. I also talked to Richard Weintraub yesterday. Basically, he informed me he would not be here. He'd be in Croatia, and that was about, that was about it, as far as that conversation went. Okay, let's open the speakers. Now, first, we have Don Schmitz with 15 minutes. And your team includes Jake Jensen.
Jensen, Jake Jensen, and also Jake Holt is also logged in remotely. He's a project geologist, he's, they're both available for questions.
Okay.
Before Rebecca starts the clock, she's quick on the trigger there. Point of order, Chair, if it's predictable and anticipated that a commissioner and staff are going to be showing additional photographs, which might be substantive in regards to the deliberations of this commission, then I would request that we all get to see those before we make our presentation.
That's fine with me.
What's the ruling on closing the hearing and reopening the?
We can do that. I think it's advisable to have the photos up first.
Okay, we will close the hearing. That does not preclude additional information coming out, yeah. Could we show those pictures and then we can go back to the hearing?
And I, I actually just wrote something so I could be as efficient as possible about this. Okay, so, yeah, there you go, all right. That's the 2004 TerraCore Biology Report. It shows the ridge freshly graded in 1951. The red annotations on these are original to the Biology Report. It's not anything I added. Can I just ask, have you guys not even seen this yet, or?
I don't know yet. Certainly, it's what you got.
It wasn't distributed to you, is, I think is what you're saying? All right, okay. Okay, at that point at least, it's clearly a primary ridge line with the old-school fire break cutting down on one side of the spine. Next photo, next page. This is 1959. Is there any way to kind of zoom in, zoom that in a little bit? Oh, there you go, that's better. Also, from the same report, by this point, the ridge has been substantially cut into terraces. That it's a primary ridge line is underscored by the way the fire break on this ridge goes all the way to the top of the mountains. Now, there's no evidence of a permit for any of this main grading, and there is, there is evidence of no permit. I'll get to that. I don't know how significant that will be in the end. But let's go to the next photo. Yeah, there you go. This is, shows the various graded driveways, still never paved as of September 2002 on Google Earth historical imagery. Now, it may not be relevant, I don't know, but it's interesting that the LCP went into effect on September 13, 2002. So approximately the same time. Next photo, approximately a month later, October 2002. I don't know if that zooms in a little bit more, but this now shows the driveways and various subdriveways have been freshly paved. So a month after approximately the LCP went into effect. No permit on that in on-base, nothing from Public Works regarding hydrology, runoff, et cetera. I'll have more discussion about the primary ridge line. For now, just recall that the key part of the definition is whether the hill, ridge, or promontory forms a distinct part of the skyline when viewed from a public street or highway. And we did clarify this several years ago, that staff had been conflating the words distinct with distinctive. Distinct means, is it perceptible? Can you make out one against the other? It's an objective yes or no, versus distinctive, which maybe implies a subjective judgment, as in, there's a significant difference between. All this talks about is, is it distinct? So the next page, these are photos I took, a couple of photos. Now, this one, we want to try to, well, okay, we can do them one at a time. I had, I had a lens, these are taken on July 13. It's kind of foggy. Shows several vantage's on Los Flores Canyon Road, a public street. These pictures are in pairs. I included the wide-angle shot for the context and then the tighter angle for the clarity to see, just so you could actually see the story poles. It's a lens that zooms from 24 to 150, I'm sorry, 105 millimeters. And the human eye's focal length is about 55 millimeters. So in real life, for each of these pairs of photos, what you'd actually see is sort of somewhere between the, the two photos, in terms of how far away it looks. But nonetheless, the ridge line is distinct against the sky. And let's see, a couple pages? Yeah, same again, that's another area on Los Flores. And then, these last two are from, looking straight up from PCH, from the traffic lanes. And you can see in the bottom one, you can see the story poles again. So this house is, is visible from the public roads on both sides. And in fact, it's on both sides, sort of underscores the ridge-like character of the hill. And I will have more, I can talk about primary ridge line and all that, but I think that's it for the photos. So hopefully, hopefully, you'll have some comment on that? Thank you.
Before, before we open the hearing again, I just have a question of staff. Actually, Mr. Toomey, years ago, I asked some questions of staff, and the city attorney said they were not allowed to be distributed to the other commissioners. And so, and here's a, here's an example of something we would like to have seen. But apparently, our city attorney said they're not allowed to be done, distributed. So that's something that I just want to bring up.
Chair Mazza, I think it's a discrepancy between Brown Act items and questions. If you're asking a question of staff, and staff are providing a response to the full commission, that can be distributed. But if you're providing your opinion, that cannot be shared with the rest of the commission.
That's not what's.
So it might have been an interpretation on what you were asking a question of.
Rebecca has a comment.
Yes, Rebecca.
On this particular item, because of the text that phrased things in a way that implied that there was a ridge line that existed, it was considered to have been an argument, rather than simply providing the visual images with dates, and that was the distinction in this particular.
I just hope we put out an interpretation memo because.
And it was considered to be a potential for Brown Act.
When I asked, it was purely a question. Okay, so anyway, we are now opening.
I was just gonna, to make a comment to Mr. Tony, or just to all of us. So essentially, what you're saying is, had these images been provided with no, just made basically just a date and what it is, like, you know, view of project from X road, that would have been fine, provided there's no commentary associated with that that would push you into the zone where you would have the Brown Act issue.
That is, that is correct.
Yeah, I tried to keep it minimal, but I thought maybe they needed some explanation.
Okay, so from now on, ask your questions in two, two emails. One with the data and one to the other stuff. Yes, Rebecca.
Just a further point of clarification. We don't send out as correspondence to everyone a question that is asked by a specific commissioner. It's sent out at the request of the case planner if they have provided a staff analysis and response that they would like to have distributed to everyone.
Well, now, then there's a question of the attorney. The staff picks what they send back?
Yes.
And based on what?
Staff's discretion over the agenda is staff's discretion, so.
Agenda, I'm talking about information.
Well, that's part of the agenda and part of the, the process. Again, it's, it's a separation of powers thing. If they think it's appropriate to send it this way, they do. You know, it's, it's pretty fact-specific and without seeing what they're looking at, like, you know, I can't really say.
Okay, well, I hope the city will come out with an interpretation, so we know what to do.
Chair Mazza, I want to bring that back. Let's put a little context around that for a second. I think staff try to answer all questions of the commission as best they can and to the best of their abilities as quickly as possible. There's no withholding of information from the rest of the commissioners or anything to try to direct any sort of guidance on the agenda. It's mostly them just trying to respond as best they can.
So if they're just answering a question, they should send it to everybody?
And that was what I was referencing in my opening statement, that we would like to maybe put some parameters on how we receive questions from the commissions, because we often get a lot of questions. We want to try to answer them as best we can for the entire body.
Okay, Don, you are back, oh, another one? Attorney, a microphone, please.
Mr. City Attorney, my question is, when you bring forward these kind of presentations as a commissioner, does that show bias?
I mean, yes, this, I was thinking through when this was being presented. I, you know, what, if they're, just like, when they're distributed or not, they should be presented without, you know, kind of commentary, at least until the end. So maybe, you know, the presentation of them at the beginning, fine, this is what I saw, this is. But we need to have the public hearing first and the presentation from the applicant, and then, you know, you can have whatever commentary you want, good, bad, or otherwise, on the backend, but.
But to me, this has shown bias. He has taken a stand already about where he is to show what was wrong to him to try to tell us what is wrong.
Well, and that's where my, my recommendation is going forward, that presentation of the items, fine, this, you know, I went out and stood on the road and took these photos. You can reference them back in your commissioner comments when you're going to vote up or down towards the backend, but we should let the applicant, you know, present their case, open, fair, and then have the comments come on the backend.
So this commissioner continues to get to sit here and make a decision when we already have heard what his decision is through his presentation?
You haven't.
Dennis, we have, we have.
I haven't even heard Don yet.
No, we have a procedure, we have a directive to be civil, okay? Now, this is no different than a commissioner sending a picture of a two-story house without comments when the staff report says it's one-story. If he doesn't comment, it's evident, it's, it's something, okay? We, that's why we need a directive, because we have this kind of stuff going on, on this commission, okay? And it needs to be very clear. And then, we don't have this back and forth, okay? Don, I hope you had seen this before. You're now on, and you can give your presentation. As you know, you get to save as much time as you wish.
Yes, please. So if you can get my PowerPoint up and if, cut me off briskly at 12 minutes. Good evening, commissioners, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. And I'm sure Commissioner Hill will find my presentation extremely compelling. The, the property has been disturbed significantly for well over 50 years. This is a picture from 1967. By the way, it was not a primary ridge line in 1967. It wasn't a secondary ridge line in 1967. Those terms of land use planning didn't exist in 1967. The Coastal Act didn't exist in 1967.
of land use planning didn't exist in 1967. The Coastal Act didn't exist in 1967, and the City of Malibu most certainly did not exist. And it wouldn't be at all shocking that there wasn't grading permits available. First of all, finding permits from the County of Los Angeles from the 1960s, and we have 1950s photographs that show this, but it was pretty blurry and pixelated, is like finding the Dead Sea Scrolls. The records are just simply not there. But you can see, it was right there next to Lost Flores Mesa. There was development going on, the grading inspectors and the county inspectors were up there regularly. This is a 1990 photograph. The reason I put this one in there, right before city hood, okay? I could have shown you, I could have spent the whole 15 minutes showing you a whole series of aerial photographs, not very productive. But the property is environmentally significantly constrained. Of course, we've got the city requirements for front, rear, and side yard setbacks. We have the steeper slopes, which your staff showed, which lace across the property, and we're not supposed to touch. And then we have the geologic setback. We're not allowed to do any structures. So, you know, there's no pad that would support a house of any size closer to the street, Commissioner, because that is all within the geologic setback area. We listened to the land, and we allowed the land to drive the project design. There is mapped ESHA immediately adjacent, and as the staff report says quite correctly, we have limited the, the size of the pad to 10,000 square foot, as required under the city's ESHA policies. There is just simply no place for us to put this house, where we will not have impacts on ESHA. And remember that the municipal code, section 17.02.060, defines the proposed development area as the portion of the project site that is to be developed, including the building pad, graded slopes, and all structures and parking areas. So, this is strictly the area pursuant to the municipal code that should be calculated for the 10,000-square-foot pad limitation. And the staff report specifies, again, that there is no way for the property to be developed, where it will not impact ESHA. Now, this is hugely important, both for your deliberations and for me personally, as a consultant. Variances should be approached reluctantly, if you have no choice. And we simply do not have any choice to develop on this property, where there's not going to be impacts to ESHA, unfortunately. The second variance is for development on slopes deeper than 2 and 1/2 to 1. You can see this one band there, that is a remnant, a manufactured slope from the historical grading that occurred. Here's an aerial photograph from 1975, and you can see that one band, and this is the area that we are going across. Here's another picture of it from 1980. It's a manufactured slope. We have the existing driveway, which goes right through the landslide, not just in the geologic setback area, it goes through the landslide. We simply cannot use that driveway to access this building site, which means we have to follow the alignment as this project has been designed, which means it's going to go right across that one band of slope, and therefore, the second variance, which is unavoidable. There's no way for us to develop this property without that variance for going across that one band. The project has been reviewed several times by your geology department, it has been found, it has been approved, and is before you accordingly. The areas of roads, the paved roads out there, and by the way, Commissioner Hill, I, I wasn't there, you weren't there, I don't know if they were freshly paved, or if they were repaved. But what I do know is, is that we are going to, as part of this project application, we're going to take out the paving for the areas highlighted in yellow, so that we make sure that the property and permeable lot coverage calculations are consistent with a 25,000-square-foot maximum, as promulgated in the city's code. So, the areas that we've highlighted in yellow here, we're going to be taking out the paving, and that has all been submitted to the staff, that is part of the project application. So, this would reduce the total impermeable lot coverage calculation to 22,623 square feet. In regards to the ridge line, Commissioner Mazza made a comment in a public forum last Friday, that we really ought to pay attention to the determinations that have been made by the city council in regards to policy interpretations on these planning issues. And the City of Malibu, of course, has adopted a definition of what is and is not a ridge line. It's LIP Interpretation Number 16. And it specifies the following, that according to the LIP Section 6.2, ridge line development standards do not apply to existing, flat, undeveloped building pads. You've all been there, you've seen this proposed building site, it's flat as a pancake. That's an actual planning term, by the way. So, on that right there, it's not a ridge line. It cannot be interpreted as being a ridge line, and this was adopted by the city council. But even if it wasn't as flat as shown in this survey here, the second prong would also have to not apply. If 65% of the parcels within the neighborhood are developed, it will be considered largely developed or built out, and therefore, is not a ridge line. And within 500 feet of the subject property, 70% of the properties are developed. It is not a ridge line, it has never been a ridge line pursuant to code. It should not be considered a ridge line for your deliberations tonight. Yes, you can, in fact, see a small portion of the property from Pacific Coast Highway for the building site. There is nothing in the code that specifies that a development must be absolutely invisible from any public road or scenic highway. The test is whether or not it is unduly or inappropriately impactful to the public view shed. Looking at this, I would say that any fair-minded individual would conclude that this house will not have significant deleterious impacts on the public view shed. The project is in conformance with the grading limitations. In fact, except for the variances that, I hope it resonates with you, are absolutely unavoidable, this project is co-compliant on everything else within the code. The project has received approvals from all the different departments, and that's no mean feat. As you know, you're all seasoned campaigners, they really, they put you through the process here. So, the biologist has looked at it, the geologist, everybody has cleared this project. It does not have impacts on primary views. First and foremost, all the surrounding houses are to lower elevation. There's one house that's at a higher elevation, as I recollect, and it does have a primary view determination, and you can see the house down there in the corner, that is being proposed, that you are considering tonight. However, the municipal code specifies that primary view corridors are for houses within 1,000 feet. It was determined that the primary view determination for that one house is further than 1,000 feet away. In fact, it's 1,350 feet, and if memory serves, that property owner did not file an objection letter to our application. So, the project will have absolutely no impacts on anybody's primary view. The project was heard before the environmental review board, it was found consistent. Noah, who's from State Parks, in her comments specified, I think there's been a lot of thought and consideration for how the project can work with the landscape, and with natural habitat, and minimize the impact. So, I think it's a good project. And of course, we accepted all the recommendations that they had in their deliberations as well. The project does include a significant, multi-million-dollar upgrade to the water system. We have a conditional will-serv letter from Water District 29. This is a priority project, one of a handful in the City of Malibu, from the Capital Deficiency Environmental Impact Report. This has been one that they've been wanting to get done for a long time. There's an existing paltry 50,000-gallon tank up there. The applicant has agreed to build a second 100,000-gallon tank, and do a significant length of new water main. This is obviously going to be a hugely important project for the public health and safety, for all the existing residents up there, as well as for the applicant that is before you tonight. And that water tank and the water main are currently being processed as a separate coastal development permit. We have received several rounds of reviews from the city, and it's moving along nicely, and we expect to have that application completed and in front of you in short order, God willing, and the planning department's hard work being applied to that. The project has widespread neighborhood support. I thought we had 12 letters of support as of, as of today. A couple more have been dribbling in. And the one letter of opposition, as I recollect, was a concern that the other property owners that are up there, we're going to have to pay into this water system, and that's not the way that it works. The water system, if somebody proposes a new house, then they have to pay a pro rata share, but the existing residents up there get a big booming new fire department compliant water system at no cost to them. And it's not very often that we bring projects to you, where we have 9, 10, 11, 12, whatever it is, letters of support from the neighborhood, and one letter of opposition. So, the project has been graded and continuously cleared since the 1960s. The aerial photograph documentation that is incontrovertible. The property is highly constrained by ESHA, steep slopes, and geology setback, hence the variances. A small portion of the driveways on the steeper slopes. The neighborhood is built out, with over 70% of the surrounding properties being developed, and the development is proposed on a flat path. It cannot pursuant to the city council adopted interpretation of ridge lines, be considered a ridge line in your deliberations tonight. It is not significantly visible from Pacific Coast Highway, or any other scenic road, for that matter, to the naked eye, not using a telescopic telephoto lens. And the CDP is currently being processed for both the water tank and the capital improvements on Lost Flores Mesa. It's, it's a win-win, and it has broad community to support, and the findings can be made for approval. So, with that, I'd like to wrap it up. I'm, as always, available for questions, and retain the remainder of the time for rebuttal.
Thank you. Okay, we have apparently two other speakers. No. Mike Rosianian?
Yes, yes, Coach.
You're on.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You have three minutes.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Mike Rosian. I have a property with my partner on 20715 Lost Flores Mesa, which is right next to 20741, the one that Don was explaining. We purchased that property in 2000, and we did submit plans, and we did all our work. Unfortunately, because of lack of water, we were stopped, because there was not adequate water. Two, three years ago, the applicant came, and they decided to enhance the water system. And gentlemen, I believe that they have done a great job, because not that they brought a safety factor, as far as a fire and availability of water is concerned, for the future, they also enhanced the entire neighborhood, the entire community. And I strongly suggest that, you know, they should be, they should be approved, because no one else did that, and we had to stop our project because of the water, and it almost, our project almost died because of the water. And we stopped it, and right now, we are just very glad that this has happened. And that, that's all I wanted to express, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Paul Rosianian?
You would love to talk.
Yeah, you don't want to speak? Okay. Okay, do we have any Zoom speakers?
There's one raised hand from Laura.
Hello.
Laura, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. So, good evening, Planning Commission, and thank you for taking the time to hear my concerns. I am one of the neighbors of the proposed development, and the one that's unfortunately most adversely affected by it. We would deeply appreciate if the developer and the commission would consider the following. The number one is to reduce the building height by at least four feet. We, so that our primary blue-water-ocean view is not as easily obstructed. We believe that could be achieved by changing the mansard or pyramid pitch roofs to flat or shed roof. We're also concerned about the intended use of this property. There's an extensive size kitchen, prep kitchen, outdoor kitchen, guest kitchen, indoor and outdoor bars. We would like to request that the applicant offer to report and execute a deed to prevent the furniture use of this property for short-term rentals or events. And lastly, we are very concerned about the access and the security of our home with this proposed 40-foot-wide, 100,000-foot wider tank. We currently provide ingress and egress to the LA County Water Works for that water tank, and we're worried about the possible geological effects of such a large tank. If it could trigger a landside, destabilize our road, who, who would be liable for such a thing? We would really like that those plans are reviewed by our own soils engineers, and any liabilities or insurance also by our lawyers. We're also concerned that if this additional water tank were built and accessed through our driveway, that our safety is a priority. We don't want gates being left open, broken, or without proper security. I also do need immediate emergency access out of my house, because my son does suffer from asthma, and I'm really concerned about being blocked or no access out. We would really appreciate that the developer explore alternative access to their proposed water tank. We provide ingress and egress to the vacant lot next door, and we think an alternative route might be a solution, where we still have access to our home that's undisturbed, and are also not serving as for trucks in and out. Again, the building height is a choice, it's a variance by choice, and we would, we understand we're within 1,300 feet, but we're the only person whose view is affected. I understand that there's a lot of support from the neighborhood about the water tank and safety, but I think a lot of people are supporting because they're looking at the development and the resale value of their homes. I don't really think there is a look into the life there and preserving that neighborhood, the quietness, the character, or any of that. I think I'm the only one questioning for that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other Zoom speakers?
No, those are all the raised hands.
Okay, I did not see a written comment by Paul Rosarian, and so I will attempt to read it. Okay, now we have a 150-k-gallons water tank going to Hope. This is, this will help the, I can't quite read that, the community. We want to, the City of Malibu, to support new development in this community. Okay, we are going to close public con, oh, no, we're going to have rebuttal, Mr.
A little hasty there, Chair Mazza.
No.
Before you start the clock.
I remembered in time.
Could we put my PowerPoint back up where we left off, please?
And, Don, you will have 3 minutes and 52 seconds for rebuttal.
Plus or minus, right? Not yet, hold on. Okay, and start the clock. So, thank you. Again, this property has been significantly disturbed since the 1950s. It is not in any way, shape, or form a ridge line by definition and interpretation by the city council, and the planning department, and this community. The ESHA is something we've already discussed. There's literally no place for us to develop on this property without impacting ESHA. It does not have significant visual impacts to Pacific Coast Highway. It just doesn't. Now, in regards to our neighbor, and the concerns that she articulated, the following. As it pertains to her concerns over the water tank improvements, I very much look forward to working with her on that and addressing her concerns. That's a separate coastal development permit. It's most certainly germane, as it pertains to the proceedings tonight. But that being said, we will definitely roll up our sleeves and do everything possible to assuage her concerns, especially as it pertains to access for her and her family, as, as the water system is improved. In regards to the primary view, I'm sorry, I just don't see this as being any sort of significant impact. That little, little red area right there, that's the house. Reducing the house by four feet is not only unjustified under the codes for the City of Malibu, because we are well outside of that 1,000-foot radius, but it's, it's a lot of pain for the property owner, with, with literally no significant gain for, for her. In regards to her concern about the property for short-term rentals, or being, she didn't mention a rehab facility, I'll mention it, it's always in the back of people's minds, that we have absolutely no intention of this home being utilized for that, and we would accept a condition that the house could not become a rehab, or a, or a rental party house. That's fine, that's not the intent here, and hopefully, that, that placates her in regards to that particular topic. So, as I specified, it's being processed, the water tank under a separate coastal development permit. There is one thing I would like to broach with the Planning Commission, and we've discussed this with very capable staff. The, the staff report indicates that the issuance and processing of the building permits cannot be something that happens until such time as the water system is constructed. Now, at the beginning of June, I met with the LA County Fire Department in regards to this, because Richard Malika, almost talked about him as if he was dead. I miss him a lot. But I did talk to the Planning Director about this, and he said, what the Fire Department wants is controlling on this. So, I So I went and I talked to the fire department, and the fire department specified in the meeting that I had with them is that the projects can proceed concurrently, the house can pull building permits, and it can be under construction at the same time that the water system is under construction. And gentlemen, you know the lag times involved with processing building permits and construction and everything else. If it has to be sequential, that's extremely painful. The certificate of occupancy cannot be issued for the house until the water system is completed. The fire department is completely comfortable with that. Now, the staff was not comfortable with the email reply that I gave after that meeting because they don't have something in writing that specifies that from the fire department. But that is what they said. And so what would be good in a resolution for approval would be a condition that specifies that the project can proceed as the fire department specifies in writing. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
We have a request for a break. Do you do?
Before we get into that, that might be prudent. Don't get it quite yet, but this may be.
Okay, we're going to break until 8 o'clock, which is seven, seven minutes, and be back exactly in seven minutes.
And don't talk.
Please do not talk to any of the planning commissioners about this item or any other item on the agenda. Do we have to wait for a video? Okay, we are reopening the hearing with questions from commissioners. I just want to point one thing out first, and that is, there's been a lot of discussion about a water tank. This hearing has absolutely nothing to do with approval of a water tank. And those are totally separate CDP, and your comments on that should be considered then. We cannot consider that as part of this project. Okay, do we have, Craig?
But hold on. But with the knowing information that they cannot build the house without the water tank?
Yes, but nothing to do with that because a lot of houses have never been built, okay? Been approved and never been built. Craig, you're on.
Yeah, I wanted to get into some stuff, but first on that, it would, I mean, all, or at least most all of the letters in favor of this seem to be conditioned on, you know, we're definitely going to get that water tank. So I'm just wondering, is there a way to say at least the approval needs to be done? Not that the tank necessarily has to be built already.
No, no.
I mean, you've got, you've got language in there already conditioning it on there.
You can condition it on the future event, but we cannot discuss that future event and its approval.
What, the city attorney answered?
Well, I answered it, but he can answer it again.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Craig, you're on.
All right, let's see. Well, okay. First off, I, Don has already persuaded me of a few things, as it speaks to my, the notion that I'm biased or something. But coming in, I did some research on the code here, and I do have some provisional observations, which I think what, you know, we're, we're not doing our job if we're not coming in here with some ideas about what's going on, right? So I'm happy to be proven wrong, and somebody will find, probably Don will find out where I'm, where I'm missing something. But I want to go through, I kind of got into the weeds on this, and I'd like to just run through it. And, you know, if you can break it somewhere, let me know, but I think it's important to kind of get the whole flow out here. So basically, there are two differing legal approaches on the primary ridgeline thing. Just talking about primary ridgelines right now. There's the statutory language in the LIP, and then there's the, and the implementing code at 6.5. C, the definition and the implementing code. That's pretty straightforward, I think. Alternatively, there's the ridgeline interpretation approved by council in 2005, which is what Don was referring to. I think it's worth noting, that's not written into the municipal code, nor has it ever been vetted or certified by Coastal. It has no binding authority. So the question is, how does it relate to the actual code? And a basic legal principle is that an interpretation, which is what this is, can be applicable to the extent that it's both necessary to resolve some ambiguity in the code and does not contradict the code itself. Otherwise, the code controls. And the issue that I see here, that we'll get to the bottom of, is that the interpretation is only approximately implementing the code, and actually, it feels like an alternative version that somebody made up who didn't like the code. Okay, so first, let's talk about the code itself. It has a series of requirements. Does this or doesn't it fit the LIP definition of a primary ridgeline? So is it a hill ridge or promontory? The 1951 Shodo says it was then. The grading, I don't know how relevant that is. We could talk about that if we need to. I think Don's made a good case that it's been there a long time. But it's still a hill ridge or promontory. It happens to have a flattened top, but the code doesn't specify how wide the top can or be. As long as it has a top, and the land drops on either side of the top, that's what the code says. It does, and it doesn't even have to drop on both sides, just either side. And here it slopes away on three sides. And then the next question is, does it form a distinct part of the skyline when viewed from a public street or highway? Not distinctive, just distinct. And here, Don several times said it's all about how significant the view is. There's nothing in the code that says that. It's, is it distinct or not, as we go through this test? So we've met that so much. So if you're just looking at the code in isolation, you'd say, yeah, that meets it. It's a primary ridgeline. Now we have the interpretation. I talked about how much we can weigh it. It's just an interpretation. The first thing to note about it, which really caught me out and hung me up on this a bit, is it's not even directed at all to most CD applications, CDP applications. Its subhead says it applies to LIP sections 1313, 1326, and 1327, which are administrative permits, variances, and site plan reviews. But it doesn't say it's applicable to sections 131, 2, or 3, the main sections for standard CDPs. So you don't necessarily use this in all cases in the first place. The implication is that the main code is maybe clear enough on its face. But let's apply this. Let's apply it and go through it. It's a four-step process in the interpretation. Step one, is it visible from a scenic road? Well, the code definition doesn't say anything about scenic, but, okay, if we want to say that, Lost Flores and PCH are scenic roads. And, quote, "Could the project result in potentially significant adverse impacts regarding scenic resources?" That's where you get the significant. That's, that's pretty hypothetical, and I would say here probably, and I think this is the first time my opinion is coming into any of this. Yes, it could be significant because as you look at it from both roads, there are no other houses visible on the skyline. That this hill is visually undeveloped from those roads. Step two, is it located within a largely developed or built-out area? Staff says in the report that the neighborhood is built out 80%, and they do that in part by counting multiple lots that had houses burned in 1993 and will never be rebuilt due to the unstable geology. Also, most of the houses they're counting aren't nearby. The interpretation says to use the definition of neighborhood that's in 3.6L neighborhood standards. That this is how we get to, what is the neighborhood? Use that definition. And when you look at that definition, the very first thing in it is that it has to be within 500 feet, let's see, I'm losing my place. Neighborhood, quote, "Neighborhood standards apply where there are at least 10 developed lots within a 500-foot radius of the subject's site." Not the parcel, but the site, located in the same neighborhood. Here, within 500 feet of the site, there are exactly two houses. Now, we could quibble. You could maybe count a couple more, and maybe you'd say, oh, there's maybe three or four. But you don't have 10 houses within 500 feet to invoke the neighborhood standards in the first place. So you don't need to go to the next, or you don't go to the next considerations that are also in that definition about all the different things about, are there intervening hills, ridges? Now, if you do want to say it's in the neighborhood, and we're still in step two, then you have to address whether that neighborhood is largely built out. And here, if you took a circle of 500 radius from the middle of the site, that's 18 acres. And within those 18 acres, you have two houses. And so I don't know if that's largely built out. It doesn't seem built out to me. Or if you take it from the perimeter of the site, that gets you to 22 acres and is two houses, maybe, maybe three or four in that. That still doesn't seem very built out to me, or, and here the requirement is that it be largely developed or built out. Interpretation says, is it largely developed or built out? I don't think so. The neighborhood standards, yeah.
Can I ask you if we can put up a picture from Don's presentation to help me better understand what you're referencing here?
Yeah, and also for the record, I did ask staff to have available these code sections if you wanted to actually. I mean, I'm quoting things, but if you want to go back.
I'm fine with you quoting them. I just want to see that there's an image, I don't know what page it's on. I can tell you what page it's on. It's this one. That's the one.
Which one? My eyes. Thank you. And again, I'm happy to be proven wrong here. I'm just, I'm calling it as I see it here. Trying to be as objective as possible.
It's 26 in here, if you want.
70% within. Okay, so he, what you have done is gone 500 feet from the parcel as opposed to 500 feet from the site, which is what the code, what the interpretation specifies.
I understand that. I understand the point that you're making. I have a very hard time on a 10-acre parcel trying to understand where you want to go within 500 feet of a site. Because essentially, what you're saying is you only do at that point have a couple parcels. And I think that the intention of that is really looking at lots that are in like a one-acre size, right? Or smaller than that. So I think.
If I may, if I could continue through and then we could.
No, 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 I'm not recognizing you. Let's continue.
I don't have that much. I would want to get through this thing, and we can talk about what all it means. But I want to put it on the table first, and you'll see where maybe it goes.
It's just going to say that.
Yeah. Okay, so. So, all right, so we talked about the different ways that, once you have 10 built-out lots within 500 feet of the site, then you can talk about other ways of how you define the neighborhood. So we're going on to step three. Here, this is interesting. The interpretation directly contradicts the LCP, the LIP. I never noticed this before, but it says, quote, "According to LIP section 6.2, ridgeline development standards do not apply to existing flat undeveloped building pads, existing flat developed sites, or other gently sloping areas." LIP doesn't, 6.2 says nothing about that. What it does say, "Parcels are subject to the hillside ordinance if viewable from a scenic road or area, and the ordinance shall apply to properties where the project site includes any area of over 20%. Slope of over 20%." It doesn't talk about building pads, flat, existing, anything. Really, it says the opposite. Where the project site includes any slope. And there's plenty of steep slope here. We have, we're being asked to process the variance for construction on slope. We're being asked to process the variance for construction on slopes. So step four, staff will determine if the ridge line feature meets the LCP's ridge line definition. Well, finally, this is where we're told to look at the definition that we only needed to look at in the first place, I think. Because we've already ticked off these other three steps. We've seen that it meets the criteria. It's a landform feature with a drop on at least one side. It forms a distinct part of the skyline. Then the rest of the step four says, if it doesn't meet that definition, then great, go ahead and build. And you're good to go. But if it does meet that, and I think this is where we stand or this is what we can talk about, either a variance is required for that or a re-sighting of the structure is required. 100 feet horizontally from the top or 100 feet vertically from the top, and that it be only one story. So, I mean, my take on this, there's a lot of it that I, you know, I bought what Don said. I don't, I agree that you can't necessarily build down in the flatter areas that are closer to the road for reasons you mentioned, the ESHA and the setback and so forth, and the GO. Exactly, exactly. But I think, I think what we're looking at here is a, to my eye, it's a pretty clear-cut case of a primary ridge line where, you know, you need to have a single-story house on this. So that's where I come down. Now, I have some thoughts on some other things. But before we go ahead with that, let's, maybe we should parse that out. Somebody tell me where I rung. And particularly, I think it's pretty glaring when you read the interpretation that it says, according to LIP 6 and 6.2, flat unbuildable sites, existing sites. Well, it's just not in the code. It's not there. So, again, law, interpretation. I don't think we need the interpretation. If we do go to it, it doesn't help us. So.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I have a comment on it if nobody else does. I don't know if this was a disclosure item or not, but the primary ridge line interpretation was written, and Norm knows all about this, about a house on DeBud's Terrace. And I appealed. This is 20 years ago, at least, probably.
Almost.
And they took 18 months to come up with a interpretation before they heard the appeal. And they interpreted it out the ability to appeal. So, but basically, it was because the ridge line was a neighborhood and the ridge line was over 10 houses and X number built out. That's where that definition came from. It did not consider a vacant ridge line, which in this case, you know, is. I mean, anybody can look at some of those photos and see the ridge line going up miles in both directions. So that interpretation was skewed at the time for one particular house. To my knowledge, in the next 20 years, nobody ever found a ridge in Malibu. Because I don't think it's ever come up again until now. Because staff never found a ridge line. For some reason.
I think we did have one on Noranda Lane. I think that maybe we.
Well, they said it wasn't in the end. But, okay, so that's just a disclosure there. But that interpretation is specific to development on ridge lines. Where this neighborhood is not on a ridge line, it isn't the same zoning. It's not the same size houses. You know, there's a definition of the neighborhood. And when you have one 40-acre house and a bunch of half-acre houses, it doesn't fit that definition.
Well, to be fair, it is the same zoning, but it is a difference between this large lot versus most of the rest of the ones are, you know, a third of an acre or so.
What is the zoning on this property?
RR2.
RR2? Okay, so you could have five houses on it. That's another subject I'm going to bring up later.
I have a lot of things, but if there's discussion on ridge lines specifically, let's do that.
I mean, I think that you bring up some good points about the ridge line. I think that the issue here is, I think, the way that I understand that. I would love to see a single-story house here. That's mine. But I don't think I have the ability to restrict that.
Was there, I mean, when I looked through this and I just tried to read the language as objectively as possible, it seems quite clear to me. So was there a part of that where you suddenly went, eh, he's stretching it there?
I think that the, I think that the element that's getting stretched is that, like, on one hand, I'm looking at this more like a neighborhood. I'm seeing a lot of homes in there. I'm seeing a lot of two-story homes in there and whatnot. Obviously, some of them are built down the hill. Some of them are by three stories, but they're literally built into the hillside, more on the lower portion. It's really difficult when you have a 10-acre parcel set amongst a bunch of homes that are on significantly smaller parcels.
Yeah.
This property has a lot of grave constraints on it. I think the geological one is probably one of the largest constraints on it. I'm just not entirely convinced that.
Can I ask you a question first?
And other people can chime in here, too.
Yeah, when he reads the law, though, I mean, do you disagree with the fact that the code says site instead of property? I mean, it's pretty clear. It says from the site, 500 feet from the site.
I very much understand that.
And so, and it says, well, it says site and then it says one story. And that's pretty clear. It just says one story. So the LIP appears to say two houses within 500 feet and one story.
Yeah, I understand. That's what I'm processing.
I want to be super fair here. Don has a comment on.
Well, I don't care about comments. If you have a question of Don, I will let you ask a question of Don. Do you have a question?
Are you referring to him as Don or the Don?
It pertains to the neighborhood.
How about that, Schmitz? Okay.
He's not the Donald.
So my thought here is, is I don't know how you can hang something on, that happened 73 years ago.
It's the size of the mountain.
Yeah, but it happened 73 years ago. Whatever it was at the time, they did. And now you're going to hang up somebody that is able to build a home on it in a very small area.
No, 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 hang on. Let's be clear. Can I be clear about what I'm saying? The grading is not relevant to this determination. Because the code only says there's a top and then the slopes come down from the top. It doesn't say the top has to be tiny or pointed or anything. It's just, do you have the descending slope? So the grading part is kind of not relevant. And we're not constraining the size in any way by this proposal, just the height. So they have, you know, theoretically, they could, they still have, initially, they have a 10,000-square-foot development area and 18 feet. And I think they put a big basement, et cetera.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else? Okay, what's next, Greg? What's next? What's next, Greg?
All right, let's see. Let's see what hasn't been shot down by Don already. We talked, let's see, development area. Okay, so they have a proposed 9,904 square-foot development area. That's, you get a 10,000 max in ESHA. So they're right near that edge. They haven't counted some additional graded areas in landscaping that you're required to do. And it's sort of ironic, just in passing, that you mean to count the graded areas to try to get out of the ridge line, but ignore the graded areas when counting the development area. On that, you only get the free access driveway, the fire department code driveway. So you've talked about wanting to keep one of the extra driveways still paved and developed. I mean, it's good that you're getting rid of some of them. But that would have to be counted towards.
Wasn't that over an impermeable issue? Getting rid of the paving?
They're getting rid of a lot of it for that reason.
Got it.
But this still puts them over the development area if they keep all of the extra stuff. And in addition, you're supposed to count the 1,500-square-foot lawn. And Adam had some conversation with you. We had some email on this. And he suggested, well, we don't have to do the marathon sod. We could put in the bent grass, which is, happens to be native from Mexico to Canada. So theoretically, it's a native, I guess. But it's lawn grass. So it's still a lawn. And by this calculation, that's 1,500 square feet. So with that and the extra driveways, you're substantially over the 10,000 square feet. So before moving on to any other issue, what do you guys think about that?
I have a question.
You're recognized. Tell me.
I have a question for Mr. Schmitz. Do you want to respond to some of these statements?
That is not allowed. A question.
He just went off.
A question.
He's went off for 23 minutes of facts.
Listen to this. You get 15 minutes to present. You get to ask questions, but not, hey, you want to talk some more? That's not allowed. Okay? Do you have a question?
Do you want to respond in regards to the permeable square footage or the impermeable square footage?
Talking about development area.
Yeah, development area.
The development area. I will stick strictly to the question, Chair Baza. The municipal code is specific in regards to this. 17.02.06.0 defines the proposed development area as the proposed, emphasis added, portion of a project site that will be developed, including the building pad and all graded slopes, all structures, and all parking areas. So when it comes to the development area, then it is only what is being proposed. And this is not atypical for the city to have to deal with this issue because a lot of the properties that we have in our town have from the 50s and 60s and have a lot of old pads, roads sometimes graded over. So the municipal code is very specific. When you're doing the calculations in the 10,000-square-foot pad limitation, which is required by the ESHA impacts, it is strictly for the proposed development area. As far as the impermeable coverage, I'm still on point, Chair? You okay?
Well, I have more. Oh, you're asking Chair. I was going to talk about impermeable.
I don't take my head off if I stray here. So I just want to keep on the straight and narrow.
So the audience understands. If I give him more speaker time, then all the other commenters get more speaker time.
Right.
And I was going to talk about impermeable as a separate thing. So you might want to.
Well, why don't we wait for that question?
I posed it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so in regards to the impermeable coverage, that is correct. That wasn't something to address development area. That was to address the absolute maximum ceiling of the 25,000-square-foot. And the reason we're not pulling all of it out, but that one last main driveway, is because it does go through the landslide. And the consulting geologist and the city geologist wants us to keep that impermeable to convey the water off that hillside down on, and not lubricate the landslide.
And when we were up there with Mr. Weintraub, we talked about that and they said that. And I said, well, if that's the intent, and given that you have all this ESHA that you're to respect here, what if you put in just the minimum swale that you need to achieve that purpose? I don't know, it's maybe three feet wide, you know, something like that. Put that along that path as necessary and restore the rest of that width.
It's a good question, Commissioner. Through the chair, I will bring you back to the municipal code, section 17.02.06.0, new development. And so what we have right now in regards to this paving is a grandfathered scenario. It's not new development. I tear that paving out and I put in a swale. I now need to fold that into the calculations for everything else.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Fair enough.
Right in the staff report and the evidence shown by the photographs, it says those were unpermitted grading and unpermitted roads. Now, that doesn't make them grandfathered. Unpermitted is unpermitted. It is not grandfathered, ever. Okay? It was put in after the LIP without permits. Craig has a photo of it.
I understand.
Okay, so we have to consider it, in my opinion, impermeable. Now, my concern about that road is that road leads to the other pads. Okay, that's the only road you're leaving is the one that leads to the other pads. All the other roads are also on the, that are being taken out are on the landslide. So it makes it easy to subdivide and put in new with a, an existing, quote, existing road that was never permitted. So I don't know how, and I can ask staff how they could possibly say something that was unpermitted, unpermitted grading, unpermitted paving can be grandfathered.
So you said there was a, well, he said, he posed that to me as a question. And I think I can very concisely answer that.
Sure.
Okay. So what is not at all open for any debate or controversy is that the roads and the pads and everything been up there for over half a century. And so what we don't know is when the paving occurred. I do know, being a mountain dweller, paving gets old, becomes very hard to see, gets dirt on it, you repave it. The fact that there's not permits for the grading on the pads and the roads doesn't mean that they are illegal. You see, back in the 50s and 60s, there was a whole different land ethos.
Okay, no, I don't need to know that. Thank you, thank you. Could you put up Craig's pictures? The 1972 Google picture of the grading?
Or the?
Or September?
2002?
2002 picture.
And I'll just say, while you're finding that, I did go through the whole series, the time series of those roads on Google over time. And it's never paved until 2002. I didn't include all that because I didn't want to have to click through the whole thing. See, it's still not paved in this year. And it's still not paved.
Right there.
That's when it was new. And that was approximately a month after the LCP went into effect.
So it's not grandfathered. Now, you notice there's a lot of other roads that are in the landslide area. And because this connects to Lost Flores Road, it can be used as an access for, quote, whatever else happens up there. That bothers me greatly, especially since it's, it should be counted impermeable and it is access to building pads.
Can I try to assuage your concern? Because it's a valid one. I would have you take a look at that photograph. And the one driveway that we're suggesting remain goes up to the existing proposed pad. All the other roads go to these other ancillary paths that you're concerned about. And those are the ones where we're.
Next, end of question. Why do you need a new driveway?
Awesome.
Oh, because it's on the landslide.
Correct.
Well, it's there, it's there. You're saying, let's keep it, it's there. So what's the environmental damage? The environmental damage is another paved road.
It's there, but it doesn't meet the 1.25 slope stability factor safety that the city requires for an access road, Chair.
Neither does yours.
No, the new road will.
The new road is on the landslide zone.
But the landslide's down here.
They can build it solid enough with the.
Right, but it's in the geological setback zone.
It's in the setback area for structures. Okay, so we're not allowed to build any structures. But where the road is proposed meets the minimum 1.25 slope stability factor.
Can I ask, do we have evidence in the record, what you're proposing to say, that you need to keep it for drainage? Do we have a letter from the geology or the hydrology that says, if, you know, is there, we did a study and if we don't keep this, XYZ is going to happen or what? I mean, we've got this anecdotal work.
Well, let me ask you a more pertinent question.
I'd like the answer to that.
Yeah, well, before you answer it, where your new stable road is going is right near where that, this road hits Lost Flores Road. So I am assuming it's just as stable down there by the road.
No, it comes all the way. In fact, if you want to pull up my PowerPoint slide that shows the location of the driveway relative to the landslide and the geologic setback area, that might be more helpful. But the driveway comes down, basically, all the way down to the end.
Right, but down there at the bottom by the road. If you eliminated the last 50 feet of that road, it wouldn't have no effect on the, on the landslide, correct?
I'm getting confused.
In other words, if that road did not connect to, to Lost Flores Road.
No, I think it's much more than that. If you look here, you see that purple line? That purple line is the geologic. That purple line is the, the geological line, correct?
Correct, this right here.
So you'd almost be eliminating the entire road if you wanted to...
No, no, no. I'm just saying disconnect the road from Las Flores, so it can't be used as...
Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, you're talking about the other...
This road, you're talking about the old road, John?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So however, here's my, here's my conundrum.
That's like the area that created slope.
But I'd be more than willing to cut off the paving so it doesn't connect, but I still have to get the water down there. So maybe part of it, maybe I could do balancing acts so we have a drainage swale.
Now, ask me this. Does the water run down that road?
Yeah.
Is the road dipped in the middle?
Basically, this, this road that we're suggesting that we, what happened to my...
It's angled like it's a big swale.
Right. It comes down on an angle like this. So all the contributory drainage from the upper hillside comes down, collects on that and goes down to Las Flores. And to Commissioner Hill's query, which is a valid one, Mr. Holt is in attendance here, but the reviews by the city geologist and by the consulting geologist specified that minimizing the infiltration of water into this property to maintain the stability was absolutely essential.
Okay, but you, but if there was a swale for the last 50 feet that was three feet wide, so you couldn't drive a car on it?
Yeah, yeah, we could do that.
Okay. Now, that still brings in, okay, so that still leaves the fact that you're over on the impermeable coverage.
Yeah.
No, no, we're not.
Yes, you are, because it's not grandfathered.
Well, no, no, sir, let me explain. I'm not rebutting you. Okay? If you've got, go to the slide that shows the yellow areas of the roads that we are removing. When we were prepared to come before you two weeks ago, we hadn't got your comments on this, and you guys started saying, well, what about the total maximum pervert lock coverage? It's a very valid point. And so what we have done, there you go. All right. So, because we were well under the impermeable lock coverage, Commissioners, but we followed up on that and we proposed to remove all the roads, all the paved roads that you see in yellow here, so that it would get the combined total, because we're adding impermeable coverage. And so we can't go over that ceiling of 25,000 square foot. So by taking out the areas highlighted in yellow here, gets us down to 22,623 square feet.
Including the road that you're remaining.
Everything, correct, correct.
Okay, is that correct, Adam? Okay. End of question.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else have any questions, or you want to continue, Craig?
Did somebody else go?
I don't really, so, look, I don't really have a lot more concerns with it. I think that the, the main concern is what, what Craig sort of brought up about the hillside stuff, ridge line, what you want to call it. I'm, I'm not really, I'm kind of comfortable with the project the way that it stands right now. So I was going to make a motion to approve the project, but if, if there's some, I, I guess I would almost, any project that I could reference with any precedent similar to this, where it has been denied or reduced to a single-story home, do we, is there anything of that on record that we have at this point?
What happened up near Beatrix's house, up Ramirez? She appealed something.
Remember back in the Ramirez Canyon? I think I remember what you were talking about, but I think it had a two-story.
Still.
Yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't a ridge line, but...
No.
That was just a hillside.
There have, it doesn't matter whether it's happened before. I mean, I think it's pretty clear in the, in the LIP exactly what it says. I mean, you can't...
That's your opinion?
Well, no, it's a person who can understand English's opinion, but...
Thank you for the insult, it's all good.
I mean, you can, you can make things up, but sure. The one thing I want to point out, and, and this is why I'm very nervous about this project. And, and number one, I do believe it is a ridge line, but this commission has allowed people to build houses on the landslide that were moving, okay? Actually moving. They put in what they called a movable foundation, okay? So the house could slide off of it. Okay? So Don is presenting a project that says this is the only house that can be built here, this is the only spot that can be built here, but that hasn't proved true in that neighborhood.
That's without the movable foundation.
Well, that's, that hasn't, that hasn't been proved in this, in this, this, uh, this hearing, because they have done it with our, with Planning Commission's approval, appeal and City Council's approval.
So are you, you would want a condition that says it can never be subdivided, or what, what, what would satisfy that concern?
What would satisfy that concern is that, well, I don't think this would happen, but it, it should be, since the, the, the thesis of approving this is this is the only place we can build, then we should restrict the other rest of the property as can't be built. Otherwise, we could end up with five houses up here with pads that were built or bulldozed without permits, apparently, and with already graded access.
So is your client willing to accept some sort of restriction that said there can only be one single-family residence on this parcel?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Peak, we would accept the condition for no future subdivision.
Great.
Okay. That's a lot better.
You can make this decision here now?
I have, I have a couple other thoughts you guys might like for, to consider here.
And then, before we get there, there was some, just want to make sure that it was the client that was offering the, to impose the deed restriction on themselves in regards to the short-term rental rehab psychiatric facility, et cetera, et cetera. Okay?
Yes, I debated that with him before this year.
Great.
In case that became a problem.
Great.
Okay. So they also, that same person asked, they said they don't want any events. Now, you can't, it's hard to say no events, but, but could you say events up to 100?
No, I can say it's, it's a large home, it's built for entertaining. I hope they throw a great Christmas party.
So when they go to, when they go to, when they go for a permit, they'll have to demonstrate whatever they need to demonstrate.
I really hope that whoever lives in the home hosts an awesome wedding. I'd be very...
They need to get a TUP.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It'd be kind of hard to park a big event there.
Okay, so next, next question. The, when, when developers to the immediate east of this proposed access through the neighborhood, the neighborhood rose up and said, no, the private road is too encumbered already. We, it's, it's kind of hazardous and dangerous, and we don't want any more traffic up here. That, that would be unsafe. I don't know how true that is, but if you look at this, you're talking about 400, 4,560 cubic yards of export. That's 450 truckloads of 10-yard trucks on that hill. And you've got a couple things about that. One, I sincerely doubt that the neighbors who said, yeah, we want the water tank, understand that they might have 450 truckloads up there. And number two, you've got a really tight, blind hairpin down at the very bottom there. It's narrow, it's tight. You, you want some traffic control of that.
Hold on. Is, that road is a private road, is it not?
In part, before it becomes public, that's correct.
Yeah, so...
They, they have inhibited development in the past.
You have an HOA there?
Yes, they have a HOA and a Reciprocal Road Maintenance Association.
So the applicant is going to be responsible to that organization for the private portion of the road and any damage that they do, and that's between the neighbors.
Hundred percent.
Is it, is it, well, is it private all the way down to Las Flores? The whole length of it? Because the hairpin is right down at the bottom.
Well, let me ask a question, Don. It, it used to be normal, it hasn't been for a while, that when we have big developments, that we, we put a restriction that the road's inspected before and after, and it's repaired.
Sure.
There's no problem with that?
No problem with that. I know exactly what you're saying.
That takes care of it, because if they screw up the road, then...
Well, I'm, I was more concerned about safety and that tight, blind turn and a truck tipping over on somebody, whatever.
The safety issue is really on the narrow part of the beginning of that road going up there.
Yeah.
I think that that falls on the operator of those vehicles. I mean, you know, they get a driver's license, they're licensed to drive it. A lot of people do some not the most intelligent things sometimes driving. I've probably done that myself before.
Never.
But I think that you, that, you know, that falls on the, the person that's driving the truck, unfortunately. The, the applicant is going to make it as safe as possible for everybody that's up there.
Can I, I want to...
If you want to, if you want to have a construction parking plan or something else like that or whatever, that's fine, but you're in a private road. There's not really much that the city can enforce in regards to that.
Presumably, they'll have a lot of parking, right?
Presumably, they want to be a good neighbor.
Where's parking going to come from?
Once, they're not going to have much parking until their driveway and everything else is in.
Well, they're not going to, they're not going to have much parking anywhere because the rest is ESHA, and they're not supposed to mess with it.
No, no.
True.
You're building a 20-foot-wide driveway that during the course of construction, I highly doubt everybody's going to...
Oh, no, I, I totally agree with you. I have a question on Adam. Because this is ESHA, they're exporting a fair amount of dirt. Is it allowable anywhere to leave dirt on site? There's plenty of places to, you know, spread dirt. But I, but I, this being in ESHA...
Are you going to let them build a bigger flat?
That's really, that's really good of you, Chair.
Well, I'm asking. I mean, is it legal? Because I'd rather have them, leave it up there. I'm asking Don if, if Adam can't. No, no, wait, wait, wait. We're, I have a question going here. Adam, what do you, what do you know about that? And then I'm going to ask Don what he thinks about it.
Can you clarify your question? Are you saying that any dirt...
I'm saying that if they have 450 trucks full of dirt and they got 10 acres, can they dump it on that property somewhere?
Are you proposing they build a mountain so that the house...
No, 450 trucks, I mean, it's not that much dirt. I mean, you can tell me how much dirt it is, but on 10 acres, it's, or is it because it's ESHA, you can't, you can't put it somewhere?
I mean, most of the property is ESHA, so you would likely just disturb it further in those areas where the dirt is laid. But I'm not aware of any specific code restriction or requirement as it relates to spreading dirt on a property.
Okay, now I'm going to ask Don. I mean, would you rather put it on the property or pay for the trucks to haul it out?
I'd love not to have to truck it off the site, but I'd point out that it's 3,363 cubic yards of export. We have currently 704 cubic yards of non-exempt grading. If I was to, to try and retain on the site, which would be great if we're turning over new leaf here on grading projects in the city of Malibu, but that would be a massive additional variance, Commissioners, because we would be well, well over the 704 cubic yards of non-exempt grading that we are doing. Every spoonful of that would have to go into the fill calculations, and that would be another big variance. So I have to probably decline that offer.
Okay, no problem.
You just gave a number that was really quite different than the one that I had on the amount of grading? So I was trying to just do a quickly search of the thing.
There should be a table there.
Yeah, okay, I was going to search on the number, but there will be a table right here.
And on top of all that, and that was, I got to admit, that was very nice of you to say that, but you can't just lay dirt off. You have to overX wherever you're going to put the dirt. So you'd end up grading that whole site almost to nothing to put your dirt on top. So nice thought, obviously, that was good of you to think that way, but you can't, you can't just lay off dirt anywhere.
Okay, I don't know...
Except in a landfill. At 400 bucks a dump load or something.
I think I got the, the four and a half thousand number rather than the three and point three from the geology report.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
A couple, just tiny details, still. One, I, I don't know what you do with this, but ERB wants mitigation measures for bird strikes against large windows. I have large windows. It's a problem. I don't know what you do. What does anybody do with large windows?
Shades.
Shades, or you get CDs and you hang them from the trees around there and keep the birds out.
Well, that's exactly what we've done, and it, that's kind of worked the best.
I, I'm not, personally, I'm not exercised about bird strikes.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's a recommendation.
There's certain blazing techniques you can do as, as well, and we've agreed to that condition. So some things the birds don't see and they brain themselves, but there's shades, there's other aspects which will keep them from doing that.
And then you've got some toion planted pretty close to the house. I suspect the fire department may want those extricated, so maybe you could put those, you know, in some, switch them to these areas that you're restoring, as it were.
I believe that consistent with the ERB's review, Commissioner Hill, we are doing toion plantings as a part of this project.
You are, and a couple of them are closer to the house than the fire department would like.
Yeah, it, just so long as they are 30 feet away and they're outside of the Zone A, and we don't have a lot of dead wood underneath them, then they should be okay. We just can't have the big specimen trees.
Keep them lollipopped.
Yes, sir.
Chair, can I make a motion to approve this project as conditioned?
I, I would like to second that with some amendments that I believe Don agreed with. One is to use the prohibition that we use on Cuthbert for private agreement.
Similar language for the deed restrictive?
Exact same language.
Okay.
I would like to eliminate the last, say, 40 feet of the road that's going to remain and convert it to a culvert, non-driveable, off of Las Flores Road, so it's not a future road.
Culvert or swale?
Swale.
I, I think that we're probably just good with removing the paved portion. Again, the, the really hard thing for me about doing that is that we've heard testimony here tonight that the geologist said that that was not advisable, so I'm reluctant to do something like that.
Well, remember, I'm talking 30 feet, and it rains for 100 acres up there. This is 30 feet.
Is the applicant okay with that 30 feet?
Yes, in, in principle, I'm happy to cut off the end of the paving that connects up. I'm going, we're going to be bringing a resolution back, okay? So I'll work with your staff in regards to that. I need to get the water off that diagonal road, collect it up and discharge down to pave Las Flores Mesa. So I understand the intent, we'll meet the intent, we'll work it out.
Okay. And then, uh, let's see here. No future subdivision on the property. And the last one was a, our standard old provision of survey the road before the construction project, the end of it, repair what's been damaged by the construction.
And the road that you're referencing is the road connecting to Las Flores?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and those are my amendments. I feel accepted. I am seconding the motion.
They're accepted.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote, or do you have something to say?
I was going to say the one portion that might be removed connecting to Las Flores, could that be made into like some sort of biofiltration zone before the stormwater is released off the property?
I think that the, the issue there becomes weight with storing water on top of the landslide, and what you don't want is that to sit there and then...
Yeah, some sort of...
You, you don't want the water to go into the ground, you want to get the water off of it for the weight. Am I correct in that?
Yes, you are.
Okay, how about, consider changing your motion to a physical barrier, permanent physical barrier being placed across the road within...
Like large nat, large natural boulders?
No, or, well, I, I want to record it, that there's a three-foot wall or something.
In lieu of tearing out the pavement to address your concern?
Yeah.
And putting like, like the county does, where they don't want people going into a turnout and put some big boulders there or something?
Yeah, but have them recorded as, as permanent.
Well, it's a condition of the permit. I'd rather not call the title...
Make a condition of the permit that you will install large local rocks.
Yeah. That's a good solution.
Yes. I, I understand what, what the intent of what Don is trying to achieve. I don't think that by achieving that intent, he in any way, shape, or form wants to, uh, cause any problems to the hillside. So I think that one way to solve that is what's been suggested.
You're gonna make it sort of a rock feature.
Don't go starting talking about a sculpture or something like that. Put some big boulders out there and we'll block the road.
I'm sure that the applicant's gonna be installing a plaque on it with your face when you go for it for approval.
And, and, and I would hope that the, uh, the provision condition is permanent. Okay? Uh, is that a good motion?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say I'm not persuaded it isn't a primary ridge line, so.
Well-
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second the, I'll second it.
Well, I, I seconded his.
Chair, if I may, uh, just one extra condition as it relates to permit issuance in relation to the water tank. Um, can we just keep it pretty general and say that permit issuance shall be determined by the building official and the fire marshal as it relates to the water, the installation of the water tank?
Only with, uh, in my opinion, only with a provision that you cannot get a certificate of occupancy until the water is in. Done and, done and finalled and there you go. Otherwise, it, it's, you have a certificate of occupancy with no fire suppression.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
Is that good? Okay, let's, uh, are we ready to vote? May we have a roll call, please?
Hey, I asked contract planner, uh, Pizarkowitz to restate the latest version of that condition of approval, please.
Sure.
Um, didn't hear that.
Can you turn off your speaker so we can hear it?
Uh, the certificate of occupancy shall not be issued until the water tank is fully installed and can-
And finalled, operable and finalled.
Operable and finalled.
And, and, and service lines are-
Fully operational.
Yeah, I mean, there's a difference between a water tank and the distribution system.
Right.
It's gotta get to the house.
It's all one project, so if it's all final-
Once the project is finalled and working-
It would include the, the distribution as well.
Okay.
Can I change it? Can we make it some, uh, no release of utilities, permanent utilities until the water tank is in permanent power?
They may wanna use it in construction.
What, what Drew is trying to do is to put in place something that makes it so that nobody can live in the house even if they're, even if they don't have a CFO, which is probably wise. Not my inclination on that would be for the city to withhold two of the three utilities until that project is complete. Which would be nor, it would be normal anyways for that to be with, with a CFO. You, you would not get all three, and I think that that alleviates the concern.
But they still have to get a CFO.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, as long as they have to have a CFO. Otherwise, they're living in it illegally and you boot them.
I watched the case where they didn't get CFO. I watched the case where they didn't get CFO until they had the house sold.
Oh, no, okay. Okay, so can we call it-
To be, to be clear on that la, last portion, we'll be to withhold two of the utilities until the water system is fully operational and finalled. And when I mean water system, we mean tank and said distribution.
So you're saying-
And that the homeowner will receive a CFO. No CFO will be issued until that is completed.
Yep.
So you're saying building safety, there'll be a note in their package that they can't, they won't sign off gas or whatever until the tank is done. So that'll be something that's in their paperwork. Okay.
Okay, can we, can we have a vote?
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Would've been a nice single story, but no.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, um, our next item is item five B.
Five A. Cliffside?
Oh, I'm sorry, very sorry. Ha, five A, Cliffside. Coastal Development Permit Number Twenty-One dash O Three-One, Site Plan Review Number Twenty-One dash O Two-Six, and Demolition Permit Number Twenty-Three dash Zero Zero Two, an application to demolish an existing family home, family residence with attached garage and construct a new single-family residence with attached garage, basement, and associated development, including a site plan review for height over eighteen feet, um, address two eight eight two O, Cliffside Drive. May we have a staff report, please? Actually, let's, let's have disclosures first.
I spoke with the owner. Um, that was it.
I did a site walk-through. Commissioner Peak was there, and I also did have a, one phone call with the owner.
Um, I was there for the site walk. Uh, we raised some concern about the setback issue. Um, and then when I dug further into that and realized that that was mitigated by the soldier piles and that was the reason for the reduced bluff top setback.
I walked aside several years ago in connection with the soldier pile project, so I have a clear recollection of the site. I had some email with Planner Rick Caswell, mainly about geology questions, but also some concerns about how they were representing the two-thirds rule. Um, I think that's it.
Okay, I visited the site on Friday afternoon with Tammy Strom, uh, and looked at the siding mainly and where the soldier piles were. Uh, didn't learn anything other than that, uh, although I did participate in the hearing for the soldier pile permit, which was done prior to this. And now we can have a staff report.
Thank you, Chair Mazza, and good evening, Commissioners. So, uh, without wanting to revisit the description again, if I could have the next slide, please, for the item? Thank you. So just taking a look at the vicinity and aerial maps here. So we can see that the property is located in the Point Dugum region of Malibu, uh, over on a peninsula of the coastline, which, um, interestingly faces east here. Uh, if we could have the next slide, please. So the existing site conditions, we have, uh, an abandoned single-family residence. Uh, there's a fairly good, uh, view here of the property taken aerially, which was provided by the applicant. The, uh, the other photos, um, provided here were taken by staff, myself, on-site, um, during the story poll, um, visit there. Uh, in addition to the single-family residence there, um, which the LA County Assessor, um, has downloaded about sixteen hundred square feet, however, there have been, uh, additions made to that uh, over the years, um, which cannot be accounted for, which, um, the applicant approximates to have taken the square footage up to about thirty-three hundred square feet. Um, in addition, there is a shed structure, um, which appears effectively in the north of the property there, um, in the right corner, sort of central right corner of the central image for you. If I could have the next slide, please. So just revisiting, uh, it was given mention just in our discussion here. So, uh, there is an existing twenty-pile soldier wall, which was approved by, um, per emergency CDP permit fifteen dash zero zero nine. Um, so those twenty piles there run, uh, north-south, and the area that's been bubbled there in red, so that indicates, um, fourteen piles that were, um, effectively dropped, um, under a following permit, a subsequent, uh, permit in two thousand nineteen. Uh, so the soldier piles in place there, um, are basically just to retain or to protect, rather, the currently existing main residence. Um, and I'll, I'll get more into the, uh, the factor or, or non-factor of the soldier pile, the existing soldier piles with regard to the proposed development in the forthcoming slides. If I could have the next slide, please. Thank you. So a quick overview of the project here. So as I mentioned before, it's going to demol- the applicant is proposing to demolish single-family residence and shed structure, um, construction of a new single-family residence. Um, it will go up to two stories, which would, uh, also be the same as the existing single-family residence there, so six thousand six hundred and forty-seven square feet, um, plus attached two-car garage with a little over a thousand square foot basement, new on-site wastewater treatment system, pools, spa, um, associated landscape improvements, outdoor lighting, uh, there will be a view permeable frontyard fencing gate there, um, due to the applicant providing per the LIP a sixteen-foot-wide view corridor. That's along the south portion of the property there. Uh, next slide, please. Looking here at the slope analysis, um, so we can see that the proposed project is located on, uh, less than four-to-one steep slopes. That's, uh, shown there in the blue. Um, and you can see the location of the proposed pool, which sits back, uh, a little further to the west there. Um, west being the left of the screen, east obviously being the, the right here where the ocean is, which, as I say, is very counterintuitive to most, uh, folks taking a look at this, um, recognizing that the Pacific Ocean is obviously usually to our west. Um, you can see at the north or, yes, the, the exact north of the property there, you have the pool equipment enclosure as well. Um, all of those structures obviously avoiding, um, steeper than four-to-one slopes, which is, uh, a requirement of the Point Dugum area. Uh, next slide, please. Looking here at the site plan, um, so this just gives us a, a general overview of the site plan. Um, you can see here, I'm just gonna bring it up on a bigger screen for myself. So, the yellow line, uh, we can see that indicates the one-hundred-year bluff setback, uh, per the geotechnical report, and, um, I will get into that in, in another slide or so. Um, but effectively, it's there. Um, it's within the LIP, uh, section ten point four D, and, um, the, the objective of that section is to, um, ensure that new development is protected for one-hundred-year, uh, life expectancy, effectively, um, from, uh, bluff erosion. So there, there is to be a setback that's, that's ample there, uh, to allow for basically a hundred years of protection there with no shoreline protective, uh, device, um, being included with that. You can see the location of the proposed two-car garage. That's at the, uh, street side of the property there, um, which is to the, uh, the west, um, as well as the two enclosed spaces, uh, within the turnaround there for the fire department. Um, and then also down at the bottom of the screen, you can see the view corridor, um, there, which is obviously required by chapter six point five of, or chapter six, section six point five of the, uh, LIP. If I could have the next slide, please. So just looking, uh, a little bit closer at what I've described, uh, with regard to the various setbacks there. So this provides a, a zoomed-in version of, of that, uh, east end of the property there, um, as it, as it is, as it relates to top of the bluff. So you can see, uh, there is, uh, in red there showing a fifty-foot, uh, bluff top setback. Now, per the LIP, um, property owners can propose, uh, with the substantiation of geotechnical, uh, experts, if you will, uh, which includes the city's geotechnical consultant reviewers, um, where there is , uh, substantive evidence there in the geo-report, you can have up to a fifty-foot, uh, setback, um, instead of a typical one-hundred-foot, uh, bluff top setback there. So effectively a fifty-foot reduction. So we can see, um, just down at the corner of the, the yellow line, see the bottom corner there, that is the most seaward portion of the proposed residence, and you can see that that's, uh, roughly sixty-three feet from the closest, uh, portion of the, uh, the bluff there, the top of bluff. That's relative to the one-point-five factor of safety bluff top setback shown in the blue, and then, um, as I've mentioned before, the one-hundred-year bluff top, uh, setback there. Notably, um, as I mentioned before, or at least alluded to, so the existing soldier pile wall, um, this, this has not been factored into the, um, geotechnical analysis, um, with regard to the proposed project. So the proposed project, um, the, the geo-analysis done on that is based, um, as if that soldier pile wall, uh, was not there. It's purely looking at the erosion rate, uh, sea level rise, and, uh, the existing geology. If I could have the next slide, please. So this, uh, covers LIP section ten point four D. Um, uh, sorry about the redundancy, but I will just point it out again. So, uh, this section of the code states that all new development located on a bluff top shall be set back from the bluff edge a sufficient distance to ensure a hundred-year economic life of the structure. In no case shall development be set back less than a hundred feet. This distance, however, may be reduced to fifty feet if the city geotechnical staff, uh, determines that either of the conditions below can be met with a lesser setback. And if I could have the next slide, please, to show those conditions. So, in the next slide, so this means, um, if, if it's got a factor of safety of less than one-point-five, um, for either gross or superficial landsliding, then the location on a bluff top in which a factor, uh, which a one-point-five factor of safety exists, uh, shall be determined. Development shall be set back a minimum distance equal to the distance from a bluff edge, uh, from the bluff edge to the one-point-five, uh, factor of safety line plus the distance that bluff might reasonably be expected to erode over, uh, over a hundred years. And that's basically the seventeen-and-a-half-foot, uh, buffer on top. If we can go down to the next slide, please. So, there's another section of, uh, LIP, uh, chapter ten, so it's a section from ten point four H. It says that all new beach, uh, beachfront and bluff top development shall be sized, sized, cited, and designed to minimize risk from wave run-up, flooding, and beach and bluff erosion hazards without requiring a shoreline protected, uh, shoreline protection structure at any time during the life of the development. And then, uh, I've taken this, uh, little section of the geotechnical report provided by the, uh, applicant's consultant, geotechnical consultant. So just emphasizing there that the existing soldier pile wall was not used to provide support of the slope, um, analysis that was performed. And next slide, please. So getting into the, uh, total development square footage of the proposed residence. So as mentioned before, we have a basement, we have first level, and then we have a second level. So the basement is, um, there's a thousand square feet that are, of course, exempt per the LIP, um, basement being, uh, ten, one thousand and eighty square feet. Uh, that's, that's calculated at half, so that's effectively forty square feet right there. First level, uh, four thousand six hundred and twenty-nine square feet. Therefore, the, the second level can only be two-thirds per the LIP, um, and the MMC. Second level can only be two-thirds of that first level. So that gives a calculation, as you'll see in the, the central portion of the slide here, of, uh, maximum allowable of three thousand and eighty-six. The applicant is proposing two thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine, so it is compliant, uh, with that calculation. And then if I could have the next slide, please. So, one of the intents of the, or, or a, a main intent of that two-thirds calculation is to effectively ensure that, um, you do not, or a project does not propose, uh, equal distribution of the first and second floor, such that you end up with a box-like structure. Um, so, massing is obviously an underlying goal of that. Um, the, the massing relates, however, you'll see the language is highlighted here, um, so as to minimize view blockage from adjacent properties. So it says, "Any portion of the structure above eighteen feet height shall not exceed two-thirds the floor area and shall be oriented so as to minimize view blockage from adjacent properties." You can see, um, the exhibit down at the bottom left of the screen there. So this shows, uh, the, the adjacent properties, um, just north, uh, you've got two eight eight zero eight Cliffside Drive, uh, and then to the south, two eight eight two four Cliffside Drive. And you can see the, um, the overall, uh, bulk and mass there. So each of those properties will be looking at the building, um, seeing obviously a portion of, uh, single-story development, which is shown in the darker blue there. Um, and then obviously the, the remainder being, being a two-story development. So, so the, um, the overall massing of the building is not, is not a box. You, you have a clear stepping of design here. If I could have the next slide, please. So these exhibits just give us a little bit better of a view of that, uh, seen from different angles of the building in a two, in a three-dimensional, uh, representation of the proposed structure. Moving on to the next slide, please. Uh, this goes into impermeable coverage. So as proposed, so the, uh, to, the maximum allowable on this particular site would be sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-four square feet of impermeable surface coverage. 16,554 square feet of impermeable surface coverage. The applicant is proposing, uh, 15,759, um, which gives a differential of 795 square feet. However, if we can go to the next slide, please, you'll notice here that there is a note, um, that 500, approximately 550 square feet of impermeable coverage, um, that's existing, uh, through the soldier pile and, uh, grade beam, uh, structure in place there towards the, uh, east of the property. So that also will need to be factored into the overall calculations, the cumulative impermeable coverage, if you will. So that takes it up to 16,309, which is still under these, the maximum allowable of 16,554. Um, if I could have the next slide, please. Quick overview of the basement and first floor plans. This is, um, mostly just for, for any reference point, uh, during the discussion if we want to, uh, revisit these. Um, if I could have the next slide, please. Same goes for the second floor plan and the roof plan. I will just, uh, focus on these a little bit. You may have noticed from the previous, uh, two thirds exhibits that, um, if we look at the left hand side of the screen here, you'll see the, uh, sort of central, uh, white area, blank sort of white area that says roof below. So that is a, uh, section of the second floor that is basically, uh, open roof there. It is, um, non-TDSF space there, um, and that obviously is, uh, taken away from the two thirds, uh, calculation there for, for bulk and mass. And you can see that again, uh, to the right there in the, uh, the roof plan. And you'll see, uh, also it's, it's a lighter shade of gray there noting the roof below. We could have the next slide, please. Quick look at the elevations here. Um, the applicant is requesting a site plan review permit for the project. And, uh, obviously there's limitations on that depending on, uh, pitch of roof and, uh, and, you know, how that relates to the different pipe requirements. So the applicant is proposing clearly a flat roof structure. So there's a maximum allowable height there of 24 feet. And that's measured from the lower of existing or natural grade. Um, and you'll see from these, uh, elevations that the applicant has done so. Uh, you will notice that there's a, uh, 25 feet five inch above grade. Uh, that is for skylights that, um, meet the definition of a pitched roof because they are at a three and 12 pitch. If I could have the next slide, please. Little, uh, overview. So, um, I've taken a selection of elevations without wanting to make the, uh, presentation any longer than it already is. Um, so I've taken three elevations, um, effectively ones of, um, the, the previous ones we just looked at were, were basically the, the south and north, which, uh, front, um, the adjacent, uh, residences. Um, we're not showing elevation of the, the ocean side because there's, there's no, uh, view issues there from, from the ocean unless you're flying a drone. So here we can see the, the north, um, the, the, the west rather, west, north elevation, um, which faces the street. So you can see the 10 foot eight inch above grade. That's in reference to the first level, um, garage portion of the structure there. If I can have the next slide, please. So this one shows, uh, sections there just to give you an idea of the, uh, the overall, uh, uh, floor levels of this, uh, proposed structure. You've got the gym, um, basement there, uh, at the, uh, underground level, of course. Uh, you can see, uh, there's a great room extending up to, uh, 15 feet in height with the bottom one there. Um, and as well, I'm showing the, uh, proposed materials. So these also meet chapter six, the, uh, the visual, uh, scenic and visual resources there, um, with, uh, non-reflective, uh, materials and colors to be, uh, essentially not, not brilliant white. They're, they're supposed to be more earthy tone as we can see. And the applicant's proposing wood and stone primarily with, uh, uh, a, a, uh, significant portion of glazing, uh, primarily for the, uh, for the second floor there, uh, but also down below as well. Uh, if I could have the next slide, please. Uh, this just gives a, another look here from a couple of other, uh, sides of the building just to show, um, at the top there, you can see, uh, some of the hallway that obviously, uh, goes up from the first level to the second level there with the stairs. And another angle here just showing the kitchen and grade rooms, uh, relative to the, the hallway there, um, at the left of the screen, um, in addition to the surrounding, uh, site wall. If I could have the next slide, please. Uh, so we have the landscape and planting plan. Uh, so the, down at the south of the property, the applicant has been, uh, sensitive to plant, uh, vegetation there that, that is very low growing, uh, with a maximum height of, uh, three feet there. That's for protection of the view corridor. Um, interestingly, up at the north there, there is, uh, uh, an easement on the property which, um, has a similar, uh, view requirement there. It's, uh, it's, as I mentioned, it's an easement. It, it's not a LIP requirement, but, uh, there is an easement there that requires that vegetation cannot extend above 10 feet there, uh, through, um, an irregular shape, uh, easement that, that goes across that north portion of the property. We could have the next slide, please. So the, uh, front entry gate here, just taking a look at that, this is, uh, a view permeable, uh, entry driveway gate. And that is, uh, effectively to preserve that view corridor. And you can see the, uh, side wall there is, uh, compliant with the code, uh, 42 inches in height there for the front of the property. If we could have the next slide, please. Quick overview of grading. Um, I am getting towards the end of my presentation here. You'll be glad to know, uh, so, uh, as we know, the maximum allowable non-exempt grading is 1,000 cubic yards. The applicant is proposing 784 with, uh, majority of that coming from cut. Um, there will be 698 cubic yards of export where again, the, the maximum allow is 1,000 cubic yards. Um, there's no previous grading that's been done, um, since the, uh, 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 LIP has come into effect. Uh, the LCP, um, came into effect, of course, uh, about 20 odd years ago. Um, just going towards the last slide here. So, uh, with regards to correspondence, as mentioned before, um, I did have correspondence with, uh, Commissioners Hill and Leonard through email and phone correspondence. Uh, city did receive input from California Coastal Commission, which was shared with Commissioners, um, earlier today. Uh, there has been emails of support, uh, neighbor support, uh, sent by the property owner, um, that, that was sent yesterday evening. So we have a total of five, uh, neighboring properties here, uh, shown, uh, in the bullet points here that are all, uh, all in support of the proposed project. I will, uh, summarize quickly here in my next two slides. So, um, overall, it's recommended that the planning commission adopt resolution 24-40, approving the project as condition with the added, uh, condition, uh, condition number set 117. That is, uh, the next slide, please. So this is a deed restriction, uh, for, uh, stating that no shoreline protection structure, um, is required. So the property owner is required to acknowledge by the recordation of a deed restriction that new development on a bluff top lot or where demolition and rebuilding is proposed, where geological engineering evaluations conclude that the development can be cited and designed so as to not require a shoreline protection structure as part of a proposed development or at any time during the life, uh, of the development. This is a standard condition that was inadvertently, um, left off. Uh, that is something that would obviously be added to, uh, a resolution should the planning commission, uh, choose to move forward with, um, a, a vote of approval. Um, that concludes my presentation. I, I will remain available for questions. I, I understand the applicant has a presentation of their own that they would like to make, um, before the planning commission, uh, uh, open up the hearing.
Thank you, yes.
Do you think we're going to get to, uh, the item on, uh, greenwater?
I would think this one wouldn't take long, but that's what your guys' opinion. To me, it's pretty simple.
Okay, great.
It's not that simple to me. Well, I don't, it's not, it's not as complex as the last one.
Okay, well, let's give it a try while we, they can always request that we continue them. Okay, um, we're going to open the public hearing and the only speaker slips I have. Do we have anybody on, uh, Zoom?
We have an applicant.
No, there's no raised hands.
Okay, uh, then we have the applicant, which is Scott Utterstrom and Steve Yett. You have 15 minutes you can re, uh, there's, nobody rebut, but, uh, you can save.
I, I need to disclose also that in on base, I found the geo report from when the piles were being done that was different. And I asked Parker to have it on hand because I have a question about it, but.
Okay, well, you want to do this after the?
No, yeah, but I just wanted to disclose that we have that prior geo report. The question is, what, how did, why did they differ between the two?
Okay. Shoot away.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. I will keep this brief just because I think Rick, uh, did a pretty thorough presentation there. Um, mostly just wanted to address, uh, some of the questions about the setback, um, the bluff setback. And I will just reiterate, um, you know, kind of what Rick had said, that the existing soldier pile wall was not used, um, in the analysis of the 100 year bluff setback here. And we have, uh, the geotechnical engineer available for any questions regarding that. Um, and the, you'll notice one of the other differences here with our project is the larger, um, bluff retreat, which we have 17 and a half feet, which was developed based on a wave uprush study done for the project. And I think you'll also notice just with the layout of the site, you know, we kind of have, uh, the closest portion on that southeast corner of the project where we come within 63 feet of the bluff. Um, however, you know, as we go north, we have a much larger setback to the structure. And I just, um, was requested that we take a look at a few, uh, precedents here of projects that have been approved, um, all granted the reduction from the 100 bluff setback for a 50 foot minimum. Um, here's one, 29140, uh, with a set bluff setback between 50 to 66 feet per the geotechnical recommendations with an 8.3 foot bluff retreat. So you can see we're significantly more than that. There's 28848 Cliffside Drive, um, approved in 2019. And again, granted the reduction to 50 feet and their bluff setback range between 57 to 86 feet and an 8.3 bluff retreat. There's 29042 Cliffside Drive, um, approved in 2015, same 50 foot reduction, uh, 50 foot setback based on geo recommendations and an 8.3 bluff retreat. And then one here at 2884 Cliffside Drive, um, approved in 2011, granted the reduction and a bluff, bluff setback of 56 feet per geotechnical recommendations. So I will go ahead and leave it at that and just, we're available for any questions.
Okay, uh, still nobody on Zoom? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing and, and go to questions. I do have a question. I have a question for you. Actually for staff also, there's a site plan review for exceeding 24 feet. And we have a code that says nothing on a 24 foot, nothing on a roof can extend other than a chimney. Now, I have never, ever, ever heard anywhere, uh, of considering a skylight, a roof. Uh, and to me, that would, uh, be equivalent to saying, well, gee, the skylight can be four feet high with a site plan review, or anything on the roof can be four feet high as long as it's sloped. Uh, it makes no sense at all to me. So my question, and I, so I couldn't find in favor of a site plan review, but I'm wondering why you can't use a curb mounted, uh, uh, site, uh, a, uh, curb mounted, uh, skylight instead of a one that tall?
Well, we would be fine using a curb mounted skylight. Um, one thing that I, I don't have an exhibit for, but I would just wanted to direct you to. I think in terms of the skylights, uh, section sheet 8211, section 30, I think shows the best representation of those, um, if you have that available.
You have it here or it's in our plans?
In the plan set?
It's, it's under G?
Uh, sheet 8211.
Oh, A211.
Section 30. And you'll see that the skylights, because of the slope of the site, they're above the top roof portion, but because they're positioned all along the back of the building, they're below the 24 foot height limit.
Right, that's why I don't understand the site, yes.
Real quick, Chair. Um, so it's not like exempt like you would a chimney. Um, it's a, a pitched portion of the roof, so it can go up to 28 feet with a site plan review. The flat portions are at 24.
I find it incredulous that a skylight that's pitched would be any different than a, a air conditioner that's pitched or anything else on a 20, it's a, it's a flat roof. It's either a flat roof or it isn't. You put a protrusion on it, doesn't matter whether it's pitched or not, it's what, 1% of the roof, maybe 2%?
It's not dissimilar to other, other roof projections before where the pitched portions would be up to 28 feet and the flat portions would have to remain at, at 24.
Only, only, the only time I've ever seen it is where a substantial portion of a roof is pitched, not, not a protrusion.
Let me, let me, I guess, if this, if the, if a whole section was a, a skylight in that case, would it, would it be any difference if, if the whole, um, portion of that roof was pitched to be a skylight?
If I wanted to put an air conditioner on the roof and I just put a little, uh, plywood enclosure around it that was pitched, all of a sudden it's legal? I don't think so.
No, I get your point. What I'm saying is, uh, that was staff's interpretation on this matter. If you feel like it shouldn't be, then I'm sure the applicant can weigh in on this.
Well, I think it's a, it's a very minor feature and I think they can solve it easily with doing a curb mounted instead of a, instead of a gazebo, whatever it is, style. And, and we don't have to make a site plan review that, in my opinion, makes precedent that anybody can take a flat roof and put something on it.
Chair?
Yes.
I very much understand your concern regards to this, but if you did a curb mounted skylight.
It's only that high.
No, no, I, so you could also do a, they could make the profile of the skylight a little bit lower.
That's all I'm trying to do, is get it under the 24 feet.
Are you acceptable? We'll give you the skylights, they gotta be under 24 feet is sort of what the issue is.
Yeah, yes, and I, I mean, I believe they are, I think when it's just shown.
So the, the skylights on, on one portion, I believe that they are below 24 feet? Is there any portion of the skylight that goes above 24 feet?
Well, that's what the site plan review is about, right?
No, the site, the site plan review is about the increase in height for the whole building.
I'm sorry, let me, let me hear this.
We're, we're over 18 feet in height for the whole building. So that's what the site plan review is for.
Okay, but you're, are you over 24 feet?
No.
Okay, so, so there is nothing over 24 feet even though?
Let's, let's check with the applicant. Let's, let's check with the case planner. I believe.
There's a drawing that shows something at 25 and a half.
Yeah, that's the skylight.
Yeah, so, and that's, that's, that's an inch and a half. I mean, what I'm saying is, our resolution should say 24 feet. Uh, you can, in your, your green, you can adjust a skylight to be 24 feet. Okay, that, that solves that problem. The only other.
John, before you go there, could we ask the case planner, I think that he had a slide, maybe that was on there that showed this? When I'm looking in the plans right now, where I see the skylights, they're below 24 feet.
Yeah, there is one, he can show it to us. Uh, could you put up the slide that shows the 25 and a half?
Yes, yeah, let me, uh, track that one down. So it is slide number 19.
So we don't need to see it if we want to.
So, yeah, I think, I think what we have here is from this elevation. So, yeah, I think, I think what we have here is from this elevation, it, it appears as though these skylights are above the twenty-four feet. However, I can see here that actually it's, it's shaded there, so those skylights are effectively in the background there, which when you're looking, you know, from, from this, when, when you're looking at plans in two D, obviously we don't have the benefit of kind of going all the way through the middle. So a section, if we go to another.
No, I know, we, we see that all the time, yeah, that's, I understand that. Okay, so, so it can be conditioned to be twenty-four feet, right, okay, okay. I just want to go through.
John?
What?
If, if we look at the, the sheets in the plan set that give you the sort of cross sections of the building sections, A, two, one, two, the height of those appear to all be below twenty-four feet.
Well, except for the top one, which is like a couple inches above, that's no big deal. That's, that's what I'm saying, I don't think this is a big deal. I just don't want to say the precedent that you can go on a roof and put a pyramid. No, I know, he's agreed and we're all done as far as I'm concerned. The only other, there's two other problems I had, and that is on A, one, oh, three, which is the basement floor plan, and it includes a bathroom. So it's livable and it's my understanding, and we went through this on the house on Doom Drive and Cliffside, that you need two exits from a below, below grade.
Basement.
Basement for fire exit. Now, they do have a.
Lightwell.
Skylight or lightwell, but it doesn't have an exit and it's only two feet wide. So, uh, I'm wondering if we can say you need the, the, what is it, the minimum four point, four, four feet, three inches, I think, and, and a ladder.
Can I ask you, can I ask the applicant a question? On where you have the lightwell that's accessible from the basement? Is that, is there like open outdoor space there or is it just a lightwell with like a, like glass on top? That's A, one, oh, three.
Yeah, we, just so you know, we've gone through this before on, there's a fire department regulation about exits from livable spaces. And you need two, even though it's a small. So the question is, if you look at A, one, oh, three, can that lightwell be?
Can the lightwell basically have a, a, a metal, a steel ladder in it?
Yeah.
Well, is it open to the sky, number one?
It's a lightwell.
Uh, which would mean you'd have to have a sliding glass door or something there. And, uh, and then to staff, does it have to be four point, four feet wide?
So I, I think we can accommodate, I think we can accommodate.
I'm sorry. Four, four feet wide is the maximum that that lightwell width can be. I, I, I'm not aware of a minimum, that would be a building code requirement that we could obviously condition when it gets a building plan check.
Yeah, so, you know, I believe it is four feet on fire exits.
Yeah, it's interpretation, that's correct.
So, so that could be, so we would condition it on the second exit from the basement, which is, you could solve it that way or any other way you do it, but it is a requirement. The other concern I had was the landscaping. I assume the south boundary is the view corridor because you can't really see through the north boundary. I'm on page L, three, one. And there are, there are plants in the plant list that are over, that can grow over four feet tall. So, um, is this conditioned to be view permeable all the way?
Yes, there's a condition in this, basically from road grade, it needs to be completely view permeable to the sky.
Okay, so, so this, this L, one, three point one is not dispositive.
The vegetation within that view corridor shall be maintained per the condition.
Okay, then, uh, after reading the, the planning, the coastal commission letter, which quite frankly, I think is a little weird because of the, the massive soldier piles that we required. But they asked for findings and one was the finding that, um, about bluff setback, bluff section shall not take into consideration soldier pile and has to comply with. This is on page one at the bottom paragraph, comply with LIP section four point two, seven and LIP section ten point four and can, and so I would recommend that we, uh, we say that it is in compliance with that in, uh, condition of approval number forty-seven, spell it out.
Can I, can I just ask on that point? Why did coastal, Tyler, why did coastal think that? Were they just mistaken or did they, were they, is there an issue there at all?
The way I read the letter was that they were a little concerned that we didn't fully analyze or the staff report didn't go into as much detail as they would have liked on, on the bluff issue, which is why we got all the supplemental information that we did and shared with the commissioner. So we think with the supplemental information you guys were provided, that it does answer the question as part of the record.
Okay.
Okay, but what I'm saying is it wouldn't hurt to say in there that we did that.
We can beef up the finding if that's what you prefer.
Yeah, so, so number one, I would have that and then on number two, they, they, let's see, that was, there was an, oh, the first one, I'm sorry. The first condition was the, the second paragraph that said that they had to, uh, follow section. They said that, that the bluff top edge determination for the hundred years. And I want to put language in there that says that they did follow that and we did consider it. Is there any problem with putting that in there? Because I don't want coastal.
You're just trying to make the findings very concrete that we're making.
I'm saying coastal said we didn't do it and we want to say we did.
Respond to coastal's concerns, got it.
Okay, so, um, as far as I'm concerned, and Craig may have some questions, but I'd like to make a motion to approve with those conditions added.
For discussion, I, I, I haven't really started, so.
I'll second for discussion.
Can I go?
Yes, you're on.
All right, first, thank you, Rick, for your very comprehensive report, that was helpful. I, I am troubled by having gotten so much of that technical geo stuff only this afternoon, so if I sound stupid about it, that might be why, it's hard to review all that. Parker, can you, do you have on hand the, the previous geo report that I, I sent in the slide for this to say? I just have a question about this. I'm talking about, um, it's got red on it, it's got some pink on it, it's a site plan of this. I think it, it was included, yeah, it was included in the, in the PDF or, or in the email, the attachment that had all the other.
Is it the one that's on your iPad right now?
Um, yes, it is. Yeah, so my question is, and I, I didn't really get this fully answered. First of all, I, I understand and I appreciate about the sea level rise and, and that, that it was answered to me, but I don't get this, can we zoom that in a little bit more? A little more even? Oh. And then center it up a bit, yeah, that's good. So you see, there are two factor of safety lines on this, and this is from just a few years before when they were doing the geology for the piles. And the two factor of safe, safety, safety lines, instead of running north, south, like the one that we have now, they have right angles, one is the pseudo static line. My concern is that those are both right, well, the pseudo static one is, cuts right through the edge of the house if you overlay the two maps. And the, all I could make of the response I got in the geology was, well, that was a couple of years ago and our analysis has been refined. And I don't know, what, does that mean? It's, it's a very different line.
I know it's, I understand it's a very different line. What it, what it seems like here is that there was a lot more emphasis in one drawing placed on, which is the larger, steeper bluff, as you can see.
Yeah.
As you go to the north on this, I'm very familiar with this area. That gradually slopes down there, minimal erosion. The erosion that I witnessed in my lifetime is very much on the ocean side, to the lower bottom right of this screen here.
Maybe we could hear from the geo, you, you have the guy standing by us to just, I mean, I'm just, it's, it seems like a big difference in a couple of years, different methodology or how, how did we get the change here?
Yeah, it's a completely different methodology. So we were looking at soldier piles to, to fend the bluff, right? Those are the twenty we put in.
Right.
And then the other ones were in the, um, excuse me, the north direction, which was basically unsupported bedding because everything's dipping true north. And if you go out, out to that, you can see it daylighting there on that, on that bluff or on that canyon wall there. So, um, we, we were just drawing those in. It was, it was really for internal discussion, it wasn't, um, it doesn't really have to do with what we're doing now. So what you do now, you see how they have the, um, the piles on the, uh, in the north, south direction that you were talking about, Craig?
Yeah.
Is that, um, what we do now for the, you were saying, in your original question was, why are they, everything just north, south now? Well, it's because all we're doing is doing a setback for that bluff.
Cause it, to just, to be clear, this, this map says, this is the line, the factors of safety lines before the whole pile walls are constructed. And at that time, the intent was that the, the walls would come around.
Right.
That on the north side, right?
Right.
But they didn't come around.
Correct.
So how does, seems like you'd still have, the, the north side factor of safety would still be affected because you didn't do the extra bit.
Well, right, but it's, it's, but what we're, what we're doing now is the one hundred years bluff setback. So that's just from that east, that east facing slope. Then we don't have stability for that, but we don't have any, any development over there, so we're not, um.
So there's, there's.
We're not, we're not worried about that, that's right.
Okay, um, all right, I think that makes sense. And then just to clarify, those other properties had the eight point three foot retreat line and this is the seventeen plus, that's because of the new sea level guidance, right?
Correct, correct.
Let's see, I'm trying to think if there's anything else that's specifically for you. I don't think so, I do have a couple of other points, but thank you, that's, that's good.
Craig, I just want to comment on that. When they did the first geology, they were planning on keeping the house. So it was much closer. Now, I've walked that beach for fifty-two years, almost daily for the first thirty of it. And, uh, there were, I never saw a slide until everybody got rich and started watering their brains out. And, and this, this particular applicant has taken care of that by not having any watering beyond those lines. This is not going to retreat and Point Doom is a big rock, okay? What, what the problem is, is the prior house had a slide right up to its back door, which was a big slide and it was because of one of the neighbors also, I think. But, uh, that's, that's the dangerous part. The rest of the part hasn't changed since nineteen seventy-two when I was walking around there.
Okay.
It just hasn't moved an inch.
Got it, next point, two-thirds rule. And I guess this might be for Rick, is the, so the point of the rule has to do with the so-called visual massing. And clearly this flouts that concept when you're basically capturing that whole space and saying, you know, it's basically a big block that happens to be hollow inside. So are you saying that this doesn't matter because it's not visible to neighbors? Or why do we, or because we're just looking at the very letter of the law and the visual massing aspect is we don't care about the intent of the law?
So, yeah, going back to the intent, so it's, it's, the way it is written is, is a little ambiguous, like a lot of the code, unfortunately. We have two things going on, right? There's the, uh, there's a way of satisfying the two-thirds intent by sheer metrics, right? You, you could do that by having a box like European residence that has, you know, a second level courtyard but is fully enclosed around the perimeter. And, and, and that's, you know, that's basically meeting it numerically, but visually it is not. So the goal is to have, um, effectively from adjacent properties, you, you do not want to have that situation, right? The intent of this section of the code is to have a stepping of the architectural style. So when looking for those adjacent properties across, you, you're not just seeing this, you know, sheer, vertical wall that's blocking your views and is just extremely imposing, I think. So when viewed from the north and south, you, you can see that this is a stepped building and that there are different levels to it and it's not just a box. And, and yes, it's, it does get maybe a little subjective when it comes to determining, you know, what exactly is too much bulk and mass. Yeah.
So to, to, so to be clear, if, if they filled in that hole in the top, the second story would definitely be too big by the numerics.
Uh, yeah, I would need to look at the exact area of that.
It's, you know, in this case, I think it doesn't really matter much because the neighbors really don't have much view, but it is a kind of a dangerous precedent.
No, it's done, unfortunately, it's done all the time, okay?
I haven't seen this, this approach in five years.
Well, maybe in five years, but, okay, but can we move on because we, we are running, we're running out of time.
All right, next point, impermeable coverage. We are over the limit because the pool of seven hundred and fifty-five square feet has not been counted as impermeable. That puts us about five hundred plus square feet over the maximal, maximum allowable area. And, um, I understand that you had a, Rick, you presented a, a piece of, um, city letterhead with a policy that says we count pools as permeable, but we haven't for a while now. And Richard agreed with us a while back that, yeah, in fact, for many reasons, most of them having to do with physics, a pool is, is actually impermeable. I don't know how much I need to go into like why that matters in terms of hydrology and whatnot, but, um, this is, this is hard for me to accept to just say, oh, yeah, we'll just treat it permeable sometimes, impermeable at other times. So I don't know, I don't know, I don't know that there's, that staff has an answer to that, but guys, that's, it's.
Let's see, so we can get a result.
Us, which page has all that on the plans?
It's probably the compliance.
Let's see, I probably have a note on that.
It's within the landscape plan, um.
Look at C six or sheet L, oh, five or L, oh, four? Does that ring, that, that's just in my notes, so I'm not sure what we're looking at.
He's probably right, L, oh, four.
It is, yeah, L, L, zero point five, correct.
Okay. Um, and, and by the way, you, you, yeah, no, never mind. And the other one, L, oh, five, shows the pool more? No?
No.
Okay, well, I'm not sure which one it was. Anyway, it's not, we, we've had this conversation already and you've decided that you have enough precedent on your side to say that it's permeable. And my point was that we, we have.
I have a question.
In practice, we've changed the policy.
The, and how many square feet are we talking about?
Seven hundred and five.
Okay, you have a bunch of stone steps and pavers around your property. Are you building those out of concrete?
Yes.
Can you use permeable concrete? Just say yes, please just say yes. Just say yes.
Just say you'll use Rice Krispies, that's all you have to say.
Yeah, use permeable concrete for those, you got two thousand one hundred and sixty-four square feet of those.
Oh, I don't know about those, but the, the.
Well.
They, they were over by about five hundred plus.
To solve this.
So, yeah.
Can we put in the condition that the pool is impermeable and the projects shall meet the impermeable standard?
Yeah.
And then they can go put gravel where they want to put gravel or whatever.
Chair, I, if you mind, I would not want to start that precedent. We are following standards that have been established with permeable. There may be a disagreement here, but we're following our policies and that's what staff's taking.
Your policies were stated by your director.
Yeah.
Your policies were stated by your director that pools are impermeable.
Oh, I disagree.
Well, you're wrong.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes.
So similar to similar to the mechanical area argument, right? I think all the commissioners can agree on this one that this, these are project specific. You guys tend to sometimes allow and sometimes don't. Depends on the project, just like mechanical areas at six feet. But the staff city practice is has always been the same. In fact. We. We want to give the correct direction to the public. We don't think it's fair that the public has inconsistent guidelines. So at some point, it does need to be addressed, but what I'm saying is the reason we have kept that city practice is because. There's been no policy changes at the council level.
Well, no, 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 no. Uh, I suggest. You get your policies written. The policy manual has not been touched in years and years. And if you want to get it straight, we had a planning director direct us. That's how to do it. Okay? So. It's hard for us to vote against what the old boss used to say. Okay? Now, you can you can have interpretations. They they can always be questioned because they are not codified. But when we when we changed about a year ago. On pools, we don't need to go back and forth and 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 it's wrong to say some people can do it and some people can't.
What I'm saying is is it's been it's been applied inconsistently. Uh, same thing with mechanical areas that are floor. Do you guys disagree that mechanical areas floor to six feet have been inconsistent? It's a similar issue.
Well, I I can say we have done it, yes.
Chair? Chair?
Yes.
I understand the concern that's being raised. I think everybody's, he's, Mr. Tony's hearing that. We'll get these policies very much clarified. I understand that this has gone both ways on this. We can achieve what, if you want to call the pool. Impermeable, we can achieve that by using permular permeable concrete in the calculation for the area here, which is concrete with stuff.
And that's exactly what I wanted to put in the motion. And I don't, no, no. You have to be recognized, okay? And so do you, Greg. Now, uh. What I was suggesting is that we specify the pool as being impermeable. And allow them to adjust whatever they want to make, whatever else permeable. They can put gravel where cement is. They can put permeable, whatever they are. Grass cream.
So.
So they, the architect can decide it rather than us.
The, that's fine. I think that we can get to that threshold and we can get to a solution to go there. What is very frustrating for me to witness is us attacking staff. When they're trying to explain to us a policy that's saying it's, you you've done it both ways. I think that Tyler's not sitting there saying that to us, other than just providing the information.
All I'm saying is we should never ever say you've done it both ways. Take your choice. Okay? We had a planning director define it to us. And we're following that. Now, maybe there were errors made in the past, but we don't say, now you get it and you don't. Okay, and so. There may be a criticism that has not been written in an interpretation, but it hasn't. And that's not our fault. Okay? So that's why I want to move this along and try to solve it. We have another, two more hearings to hear. We're only going to hear one of them, I suppose. Well, actually, we have three more. So I'd like to move this along if we can and and so I I'd like to add that to the motion. If I'll get somebody to second it.
You've already got it here.
Before we go there, we have our awesome recording secretary raising her hand for us.
Yeah.
As a point of clarification, what Richard, Planning Director Malika or former Planning Director Malika confirmed was that the Public Works Department. Holds a different definition of what is and is not permeable from that held by the Planning Department. The Planning Department considers pools to be a permeable substance. The Public Works Department review considers it as impermeable. That distinction has been held for many years. Planning Director Malika confirmed that prior to his departure.
Well, I beg to differ because at a hearing recently, he stated that.
Thank you, Rebecca.
In direct words.
One word in this whole hearing yet?
Hey, go ahead. I hope it's, let's move the question.
I think it's, yes. I'll follow, finish with that. I don't think we should be, Rebecca just gave us a clarification. I don't, you know, we have lots of applications that are coming in. It's not fair for us to sit there and start interpreting. Making these type of interpretations when people are in the process with projects. She's clarified, Public Works considers it impermeable. Planning considers it permeable and that's where we're at right now until we get, until we get a final decision. I'd like to go ahead and get this thing voted on. We have two minutes.
Okay, well, I I'm going to stand by my motion because. Planning has not put it in writing. Planning has told us and. That's the way it's been. And so that's my motion. If you go along with it, I'd like to call the question.
Okay, I'm gonna make a make a very clear statement here. Rebecca has been here longer than I have. She's heard very many different reiterations of this. I do recall a conversation specifically in regards to a difference between Public Works and Planning. I don't recall the the specificity of it, but regardless, I don't think it's going to change this project. So I don't, I don't want to put that on here. I'm okay with seeing it the way that it is drawn on the plans and calculated. And I think that that makes our system very consistent based on what she has just recited to us.
So are you telling, no, 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 are you telling us that we now have a policy that they're impermeable?
It never changed. For the Planning Department, it is permeable. For the Public Works Department, it is impermeable.
I disagree, so I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Okay, so then I'm going to make a subsequent motion to approve the project as conditioned. Similarly, aside from the issue of impermeability. Second.
So you're saying. You still want to have them keep the permeability number down or you don't care now?
I don't, I'm not, I have no issue with it.
Can I say? I I have to respectfully disagree because I, we had one, I've been here five years. On the first pool I was on, I brought this up. And I lost that time and the second pool I ever was on, I won and it's been that way since then. It's not been one year. And I think maybe the difference might be in why staff is looking at, maybe when you get them that are ACDPs and they don't come to us. Maybe it does get treated as as permeable.
You see, you're shaking her head. She's saying no.
I I don't, I don't think we've ever had an impermeable for years. I mean, a permeable for years.
Okay, so regardless of that point, I think that we collectively should make a um. A recommend or request for Mr. Tony that he go to the council. And get the clarification on how they want us to interpret specifically impermeable with pools. Because clearly it has a large effect on a lot of properties. Separate issue.
Yeah, we'll discuss that on seven A.
And 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 for clarity, again, like I was talking about on the the ridge line interpretation. It's it's guidance, it's not law. So it's up to us, it's our discretion. And I I come down on the side of physics and I say it's it's impermeable, so I call it impermeable. Good.
Ready, are we going to call the question?
I I would vote for this project if we could have, if we could say we're going to meet the permeability level. If we can't, I don't want to vote against what I know to be true.
Okay, can we call the question?
I'm in the same boat.
Okay, can we call the question?
Yes, I hope you do.
For a point of clarification, I have the motion as adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number twenty-four forty as amended. Uh, number one, adding a condition of approval to state the maximum height of the structure shall be twenty-four feet. Two, adding a condition of approval requiring an LA and Los Angeles County Fire Department compliant second egress point from the basement to be confirmed during building plan check. Uh, number three, strengthen Section E shoreline and bluff development, LIP Chapter ten findings and Resolution Number twenty-four forty. And then the staff recommendation.
You have no lateral access easement and they're being granted to coastal, correct? And any conditions? Great. I do not want to see that in there at all. Thank you.
Commissioner Peak? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Regrettably, no.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Chair Massa?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we have a decision to make. Uh, we have. Item five C is continued, so we have. Uh, item five D coming up, which is um. Did I miss one?
No, you're right. Yeah, you missed five B, but.
I didn't miss anything. It wasn't continued, right?
Oh, yes, it was.
Okay, so uh, we only have a half an hour to do that, do two more and seven A, so. Uh, I think we ought to entertain continuing item E, which is. Boy.
Five D?
D?
D.
Do you want to make a motion to continue item five D, which is?
Well, where's the uh?
Two nine two.
Where's the fence on the beach?
That's five B as in void. No. I I would, I would entertain.
Item number five B is the rope fence on the beach.
So we missed that one?
No, we haven't done that yet.
We just have not heard it yet. We just heard four A and five A.
And we're continuing five C. Already. And the question is, do you want to continue five D? Because you're not going to get to it till eleven o'clock.
And have five B.
And then.
Do five B right now.
Do five.
And then seven A.
And then seven A, five B.
Okay.
So the motion is to continue five. D to a date certain. Is it, can I, is that possible next meeting? I know we have the housing element, but.
If the commission were willing to reorder the agenda next meeting because that would come back as item number four A. And you would hear the housing element prior to hearing that item, then I think that meeting could have qualified it.
Right to me.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, um, can we have a roll call, please?
Can I just say that there, on both items, there were things that would recommend a continued, things that we wanted more information on? Do we need to clarify some of that now?
No.
No?
You can, you can ask the staff. We have to move along.
And may I ask, who is seconding Chair Massa's motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, Chair Massa?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Smith?
No.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes, I'm sorry, this was the motion to continue five D.
Correct.
Right? You're saying no? Okay.
He wants to hear it tonight.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I'll say, I'll say no then. I mean, I'll say, the motion was to continue, I'll say yes, continue it, yeah, sorry, yes.
Thank you. Uh, motion carries.
Okay. If I ever make a mistake again, let me, let me know.
Item number five D will be continued to the next Planning Commission meeting on August nineteenth.
Sorry, guys.
Yes, D as in dog, uh, your item has been continued to August nineteenth.
Which one? Five B?
I don't know, I mean, maybe we should.
Okay, we're opening.
Sorry, you guys. Apologize.
We should do D and and.
No, we have B, B never got heard. It was first. Okay, so we're going to hear item five. Now, remember, now I just, I'm going to start this hearing. Last time we continued after ten thirty, we ended at midnight. Now on, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to leave. So um, we have to just not make decisions at midnight. Okay, item five B is coastal development permit number twenty-one dash oh three five.
I need like a two-minute break.
Take a two-minute break. Yeah, make it two minutes. You got to be back here at ten oh eight. He only gets a minute and a half. Well, I want Mr. Toomey to be able to do his report. Oh.
We're warm.
We're warm.
We're warm.
I I would caution that we do need the other commissioners to hear the staff presentation in order to deliberate on the item.
Here they are.
Where's?
He said, go ahead and start.
What, we're still missing Commissioner Smith?
Correct. We need to wait.
He said, go, he said, he said. Well, all right, informally.
No, no, don't, don't. We're hearing item number. Five B, which is two, four, seven, one, four, Malibu Road. Conditional. Conditional coastal development permit number twenty-one dash oh three five and variance number twenty-four dash oh one two. An application to construct a rope fence across the width of vacant beachfront parcel, including a variance for encroachment into environmentally sensitive habitat area. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm presenting for the case partner, Brendan Winger. Sorry you got to see me again. Um, I'll try to go through this quickly tonight. Uh, this item is located um on a beachfront parcel south of Malibu Road. A map blue line stream goes directly through this parcel underneath Malibu Road through a drainage culvert that connects to the Pacific Ocean. The entire property is with, within the appeal jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission. The applicant is proposing this fence to create a delineated boundary between their property and the public beach. This site is frequently visited by beachgoers, some of which leave trash and debris, as shown in these pictures. You can even see that some of the debris has infiltrated some of the drainage area in the picture to the left. So this fence they're they're proposing will allow the LA County Sheriff to enforce trespassing laws on their property. Being so close to a map blue line stream, the project went to the Environmental Review Board on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. The ERB had three recommendations to the Planning Commission. Uh, one was that handheld drills be used to install and no heavy equipment be used on the beach. They wanted further analysis on sea level rise and they wanted to um make sure that the the habitat that existed around. The drainage area was restored to the maximum extent feasible. the drainage area was restored to the maximum extent feasible. The planning commission can, there is no recommendation tonight, but the planning commission can add conditions that will meet the ERB recommendations. The project description is for a new two hundred and thirty-four-foot-long, four-foot-tall rope fence along the vacant beachfront parcel. And the applicant is requesting a variance to allow new development to approach into environmentally sensitive habitat stream buffer. So this slide here is the site plan and elevation. To the right, the site plan shows the proposed fence along the entirety of the property. The fence will be located over fifty feet from the mean high tide line, which meets the ten-foot setback from the LCP. And the applicant originally located the fence much, a little closer to the ocean, adjacent to the string line. But they've decided to push the fence line back even further, ten feet from what would be the building's string line. The applicant is requesting a variance for development within a hundred feet of the stream buffer. The support posts for the fence are sited approximately forty feet away from each other. But they do propose to avoid the flow line of the stream. There is no environmentally sensitive habitat area that was mentioned in the bio report, so the the stream in this case would just be the flow line. The elevation to the left shows the helical piles that will connect down to the bedrock. And then on top of the surface is a four-foot-tall rope fence, as mentioned, that goes along the entirety of the property. Here's a picture that kind of shows the existing conditions of the site. And you can see that drainage kind of towards the center of the photo that leads out to the Pacific Ocean. On August second, twenty twenty-four, staff received a comment letter from the California Coastal Commission. They had three large issues that they wanted to talk about. One was that the proposed fence may obstruct public access to state lands. Two, that prescriptive rights were, they were worried that they were being impacted with this development. And three, that the project is proposed near a stream and might impact the flow line of the stream. So to kind of comment on some of these concerns, a vertical public access to the beach exists directly to the east of the site, and that is not being altered in any way. Beachgoers will still have access to the site. And lateral access should also be maintained. The applicant got a letter from the State Lands Commission. They also are proposing to meet the, they're proposing their fence on dry land, at least ten feet back from the mean high tide line, which has historically been the boundary between public and private parcel on beachfront. And lastly, regarding the ESHA impacts, as mentioned, the bio assessment didn't indicate the presence of any riparian area. So really, the only issue we're dealing with here is the flow line of the drainage, which they propose to avoid. So it's a complicated project, includes a variance. Staff is not making a recommendation tonight. We're seeking direction from the commission to come back with a resolution reflecting the decision tonight. And we're available for any questions.
Yeah, do we have any disclosures?
I have a disclosure. I spent a lot of time on the beach in my life. I have a very hard time understanding the reason for this on a site that doesn't have a house on it, and I think that you're shuddering on very thin water. But I would like to keep an open mind as I address this.
I tried to call the phone number. Nothing happened. I sent an email to HalfDavis or whatever it was dot net or something, and it came back. So couldn't talk to anybody because I didn't have anything that worked for me. I went by there today and looked, and I feel the same as Commissioner Pete. This is a little tricky here. I can tell you that I'm sure the world is watching us at this point on this.
I went and visited the site. Learned that there are a lot of invasive plants throughout, not just around the drainage. Drainage has a pond that supports frogs. Looks pretty mucky. There's graffiti in the concrete box drain. Yeah, well, yeah. Kind of, there's some of both, really. I guess that's it for disclosures.
As usual, I agree with Scott. I've been to the beach a lot. And I, but I have just driven by the site. I, my one comment of disclosure is, I guess, apparently the staff got this letter from the Coastal Commission on Friday. And we didn't get it today, until today sometime late. And it's really hard to get this stuff done. So let's open the hearing. We have, do we have any Zoom speakers?
No, there's no raised hands.
Okay, so the only speaker is the applicant team, which is Dr. Sam Barbarian and David Haroney. You have fifteen minutes. There are no other speakers, so you can reserve time. But there's really nothing to rebut. We will ask you questions if we need to.
Yes, hi, thank you. I'd like to start answering your question first. I live in the house right next to this vacant lot with my family, and we've been there for seven years. We've been having a lot of problems on this land. So the reason for us looking to close it off is because of what the sheriff has told us needs to be done before they can enforce the laws of the land. David Clay is the sheriff. We didn't believe him at the time, so we looked elsewhere to get help to control. We called Malibu Patrol, and they told us the same. Said we cannot enforce anything. I mean, there are dogs running loose, kids climbing the boulders, falling down. There's no lifeguard. There is no authority. It's a no man's land. So Malibu Patrol told us you need to close off and mark the boundary of the land before we can come here and get things under control. So mainly, our concern is obviously the liability we have. We've had insurance canceled on us. We've moved the property into a LLC that doesn't own anything. We've taken all kinds of measures, but, you know, it's not a good situation. Obviously, it's liability for us, and protection of the public is number one, because there is no one watching. Sheriff doesn't want to enforce the laws. Number two is protection of the covert, as you saw in the pictures. It's used as a public bathroom. It's full of graffiti. Those pictures are from a few months ago. You've been there today. There's more graffitis, colorful ones, huge. So we're not looking to build anything here. We're not looking to make money here. This land cannot be built, has a lot of easements, and even if those easements are taken off, I don't think it can be built because of other things untitled. But we just want it to be a safe environment for our neighbors, for us. They're starting bonfires at night. They're. I don't want to go into details, and this summer night bother you, but a lot of bad things happen on this land on a daily basis. To a point, we don't want to go down to the beach at all. Dogs, it's just one of them, blue stars running. Any questions?
Okay, well, we'll ask you questions. Is that basically what you have to say? Because we have to close the hearing, and then we ask you questions. So if you say anything you want.
Davis Haroney, Dr. Mahouvi and I, we purchased the land. We share it, you know, with our families. If you've tried to reach me, sir, I'm sorry, but I never received any emails, but all the information is available. And at any time, I can, you know, meet with you on the site. We honestly, all we're trying to do is somehow to be able to protect the rear portion of. We understand the front is for the use of the beachgoers, and we're not planning to do. We just want to safeguard the backside of it, especially the covert, because honestly, it's being misabused as a restaurant. And it's filthy. It smells, and there's nothing we can do about it. We called the sheriff's department. They don't want to respond, because there's no signage out there. And we just need help. You guys tell us how to do and safeguard this land. I mean, we don't know what to do with it anymore. We're just difficult. And we're there in the house, and in the middle of the night, there are bonfires. And we call sheriff's department. People get drunk, and they said there's no signage, and we're not going to touch them. And honestly, I'm scared to stay at nighttime over there because of this. And I'm there with my kids and my wife. I don't know what to do. We just need your help and guidance. The only thing we thought of is just put a rope, anything, to put some sign up so we can call the sheriff's department. We're open to put anything up that is legal and is supported by the city.
Great, thank you. Well, we'll be asking you some questions. That closes the public hearing. I've got a couple of questions of staff, and one of them is, is there any signage in this request? I read it so fast, I didn't see anything.
I don't recall any in the application. Are you guys proposing any signage?
No, what the sheriff and Malibu Patrol told us is we need to mark the boundary, and then we can, we don't need permit. We just put two private property signage, and then they will come and enforce it.
Nope. Well, okay, I think the sheriff gave you bad information, but. Because now, I just.
Explain that.
Explain what?
The signage.
The signage, you need to permit from the Coastal Commission to put signage on the beach. Period. End of question. Now, the court, the Supreme Court said, yeah, underneath your house, et cetera, but good luck on that one. In looking, one, my question to staff is, this isn't a house. It's a rope. And it was hard for me in reading this to figure out how you determine the ten-foot back. Now, the ten-foot back from the high tide line or whatever you're using, is that because there's an easement for ten feet for the public?
No, it's based on the mean high tide line study that was provided by the applicant team.
Right, but it's ten feet behind that, correct?
Correct. It's more than, it's more than fifty feet behind that line, according to the plans and the.
I know, but the reason that was done is just let the public buy anyway without giving an easement? Because you don't, there isn't an automatic ten feet.
No, so in order to determine that this was their property, they went through a State Lands Commission process, which the original fence was ten feet even closer to the ocean. We, our recommendation to them was to move as further landward as possible.
So the answer is that was just voluntary?
Yes, the additional ten feet, yes.
There is no easement, okay. And then I looked at exhibit B, which shows the line. And it appears to dead-end about fifteen feet into a house, which looks a reasonably new house. I don't know exactly how old it is, but is it reasonable to assume that the line has moved back from that house since that house has been built that much? It just doesn't seem like that that's a a rational thing to see as far as location. And the second question is, we have wave up rush and sea rise and all this kind of stuff. And I didn't see anything in here that showed the sea rise calculations. And what happens when this tide, this high tide line moves, and how often does it have to be checked?
That's a lot of questions.
Well, I mean, it's determined on where the fence is. How do you justify where the fence is and what is the situation on? Obviously, there's pilings in the ground. If a wave comes and knocks them over, is that now public land or?
So as, this was also a concern of the environmental review board, and that's why in our presentation, we said it would be wise to add conditions that in the future, if wave up rush was to kind of alter this fence, that the fence be moved or removed. That'd be one of the conditions of approval we would recommend.
Can we look at figure one, put that on the screen from the staff report, page three, I believe? Yeah, three of eleven. There are a couple of things on that that might illuminate this here. By the way, I have a lot of questions. They vary from really, like, you know, almost philosophical to really mundane.
Remember, we're going to, we have to have another hearing after this, so don't be philosophical if you don't have to.
I'll be as brief as I can. While he's pulling up the map, just one question that was mentioned about bonfires at night. Can the sheriff not at least enforce building a fire on the beach at night? I mean, yeah, they can't say.
The practical thing is the sheriff doesn't enforce anything.
Has in this kind of a zone is likely where the bonfire is happening is on technically private property. Now, it may not be the person that's having the, it's their, it's their private property.
But they don't know.
So the sheriff is very wary of, they understand that that land that's close up to that bluff is private, not public.
But to have an uncontrolled fire, can you even have that on your own property?
To answer your question, Craig, I've had fires on our beach. The sheriff has come down, and they will not walk on the sand because their shoes get dirty. Okay?
Then other times, you see them going down there and pursuing them. So I think it depends on who you get, what the level of activity is. You know, is there ten people down there that are obviously there?
What the sheriff does is not part of this application.
Okay, so do we have the figure one, page three? Oh, this is a yes. Oh, great. Can we zoom in some? All right, so there are a couple of things that we can see in this. One, following what John said, the mean high tide line is ambulatory. Look at the wet sand on the east side. That's already like about fifteen feet into the depth of that building, which is approximately where the edge of the rope would go. So the notion that, I mean, where this rope is proposed would definitely catch wave up rush. It just would, like, right away on the first big high tide or when there's storm surge. Within a month or two, this thing would be down.
When the first month swell or no swell, the water will be touching it where it's proposed.
Yeah, that's one point while we're looking at this. Another thing is, I don't know if how much this matters in the end, but the designated ESHA area has nothing to do with the actual drainage and where the box culvert is. That's, I guess this is, we don't take this as.
The map is just a guide.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you have to do a bio assessment to get the actual delineated boundary.
Okay, so I mean, it just seems like there are a lot of issues here. Maybe one option would be to say, like you said, it's the top area. If there's a way to just like, just up near the slope, like by the box culvert maybe, and leave most of the beach open? Even then, it's going to get washed away within a year.
I think for the applicant, so the first thing is, that's all one parcel, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And that parcel is zone public open space. You cannot build on it?
No, it's, you know, when they subdivided.
Go closer to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. When they subdivided the area, our understanding is that it's for the use of the property owner and nine properties on the dry side of the Malibu Road.
But you own it.
We own it.
And those, do those other property owners come down and use that portion of the beach?
I have no idea. I don't even know who they are.
So they have a deeded right to that?
To use the beach, yeah.
The public access is on what I'm going to refer to as the south side?
Correct, sir.
Okay, how would you stop somebody from coming down that walkway? Okay. How would you stop somebody from coming down that walkway and going into there?
The line that is drawn, the rope basically, the way the staircase is built, there's a staircase coming, there's a wall there.
So you would attach to the wall?
Yeah, well, we can't attach to the wall. Basically, we want to the-
Last, the last piling would be adjacent where your property is.
Correct, sir.
Okay. I don't see how the fence that's being proposed would stop anybody from going in there, right? What I think that you're trying to do is have something that you can put signage on so that you can say to a sheriff, it's private property, they, they can't be here, right?
Correct.
That's fine when the tide's low, but when the tide's high, right, that, I think that the coastal commission is going to say, without a house or a structure here, that sand belongs to the public. Now, we can agree to disagree on that. I just don't see how coastal is going to allow you to do what you're wanting to do, even if we approve it here tonight. If it got appealed, then appealed. Maybe it doesn't get appealed, I don't know. But I think your starting point would be to say, I want to get a coastal development permit to post my sign there and what is the language of my sign, even if I just posted a sign on the rocks. And then the, the area of where this would go, it would be very hard for me to wrap my head around approving, putting a post, even on the pile that goes all the way down to the, you know, bedrock as proposed, to have a rope on there separated by a foot that's going to do anything. You know, and obviously, you don't want a chain link fence or it's going to look awful and you want to be able to use it and kind of go in and out.
Yeah, we're, we're not planning to close it off. It's just that we want to protect-
In Malibu, the coastal commission, in my experience, has had a very tough time when property owners want to tell the public that that sand belongs to them.
Yeah, can I just say, like, in, in their letter today, quote, "The static nature of the proposed fence will interfere with the ambulatory nature of the mean high tide line and the public's ability to access public trust lands." And then they also want, they say, well, we need to investigate prescriptive rights. In other words, the, had the, the public's been using this for a while, they may have easement already.
Let me just summarize it. The coastal commissions, and, and these are, I'm not a lawyer, but the coastal commissions, they have a statement of why they were set up. And one is public access. It's number one for them, public access. And when they write a letter like they wrote here, they're gonna, they're not going to let you do it, okay? We can say yes all we want, they're going to drive you crazy. Now, I understand your situation and, and I hate to give advice, and this is not coming from the city of Malibu, but you own a property that could be valued at a very high, high number. And I've had a friend who owned a, basically a swamp, okay? You, you, you give it to a public agency, you get a humongous tax deduction and your liabilities are gone. And the situation you're in right now is it's being used by the public and the, and the coastal commission won't stop it and they will fight you and they will not give you a, a sign permit saying keep off. They just don't do that. So there are agencies that do have police power and can police it for you. The sheriff, in my opinion, doesn't do that. I've never seen him do it anywhere consistently, anywhere. As you can tell on Malibu Road, it took a huge amount of effort by the city council to get them to pass a law to enforce living in your car on Malibu Road. And then they didn't really enforce it. So I, I don't think it matters, and what I'm trying to say is, I don't think it matters one way or the other whether we approve this. I think if we approve it, it will be appealed by the coastal commission directly to them, because I don't see any public appealing it. And it so can go straight to the coastal commission and they will torture you for a year and a half and then they'll deny it. And you'll spend a lot of money. But it's only my opinion, it's not the opinion of the planning commission, but that's the reality of Malibu. Now, if, if I, we're living next door and I want a piece of quiet and all I did is want to use the beach, you're the public. You can use the beach anytime you want, like the rest of the public is doing. You just need policing. I don't think, number one, we can find that the mean, the, the rope, the, the location of the, the fence itself is necessarily in the right place. And as Tyler said, we need to put in a provision saying it's got to be moved if the tide moves, which is a real pain because we have this new study going around, sea rise and wave up rush and it's, it's a big deal. So I don't think we could help you very much. Whether it goes one way or the other, I, I don't-
If, if coastal's going to look at it anyway, does it help them at all if we say yes or no, one way or the other? What helps them more?
If we, if we deny it, then if we deny it, coastal cannot appeal it, okay? If we approves, no, is it the other way around? No, if we deny it-
You're correct.
Coastal cannot appeal it. If we approve it, coastal can. And by us approving it, it leaves you liable to having to go to coastal commission on their appeal and dragging a bunch of lawyers up there. And in my opinion, you always lose, but it's like going to court in Venezuela or Russia. Don't quote me.
Yeah, so, yeah, don't quote them in a public hearing.
So in general, I think we would be doing you a favor to deny it.
Can I say, you know, if, if, if your inclination is at all to go against coastal, I'm looking at a number of different questions and comments and things that I don't understand how they would work or whatever. Would it even be helpful to go through, just list them off, they could look at the tape later? And so then when they go to coastal, they'd be more prepared? Or should we just say it's a lost cause anyway?
Let me make a suggestion. Let me make a suggestion. Well, Norm will tell you exactly what I said. You may want to continue this item and consult with your lawyers or anybody else on whether you want to deal with coastal. And if you want us to deny it, so they can't do anything to you, we can consider that. If you want us to approve it and you want to go fight a coastal because this letter basically says they're coming after you, then we can approve it. It's what you want in general because the details of this, in this hearing, we can't get down to where exactly where that fence is going to be and it, there just isn't enough there.
There are a lot of issues.
Is that, is that, just Tyler?
Well, look, I think the, the one thing that I don't think we want to, I don't want to always be, I don't think it's wise for the city to always cave to the coastal commission. I think you have to stand up for property rights in the sense that like, here you have somebody that's rightfully paying their property taxes, right? It's clearly a private parcel in that sense. And they're basically caught in the position, which is the lamest position that goes on with beachfront land in California, where, yeah, I have to pay the taxes on it, but I can't call it mine and I have to let everybody access it, right? That's the situation that you're in. So-
And, and, and what I want, I just want to comment on that. This, the city of Malibu is not going to be the applicant-
Arbitrator.
At the coastal commission.
Correct.
They are, okay.
Correct.
So it's not the city standing up for anything. Now, we can, so I, before I hesitate to, I'd be perfectly willing to make a motion of approval, but I, I hesitate, I think I'd be hesitant to do that before you talk to a lawyer.
Your concern is the strategy, right? So do, are you guys, do you, you guys want us to approve it? Just know that if you go down that road, they might, they may say no, right?
Can we, can we ask for this case to be continued so we can study it further?
So that's exactly what I'm suggesting. So I'll make a motion to continue to a date uncertain. Is that okay? Because you're backed up. And then you come back to the city and you say, okay, now I want you to hear it. Or I want to withdraw it, okay? You can do several things. You can withdraw it, or you can, or we can deny it, or you can say approve it. Three, three different things. But-
We appreciate that.
We've been to coastal, you know, several of us have been around a while and-
Chair, Rebecca.
Yes.
I have a question.
Let's ask our, our city clerk first.
I was just wondering if we could check in with the, the applicant team to see if October 7th, 2024 would provide adequate time for them to make a decision about how they want to-
Okay, that makes it a lot more certain. So I move we continue to October 7th.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If the city denies this and based on what, any, any reason coastal commission and an accident happens there, who's liable? The city? Because they denied us trying to-
No, city's never liable. You signed something here.
Let's, let's not give legal advice from up here on those questions.
Yeah, but there's something that says, I believe, and I'm not a lawyer and we haven't asked our lawyer, you should ask your lawyer. But usually, the city says, sign something that says you're responsible if you want to get something. Okay, the city covers their rear end. But I, I would ask your lawyers on that.
I'll second a motion to continue with a couple of points of discussion that might help them.
Yeah, but let's do it quick.
Yeah.
Don't really want to get into a lot of other discussion on this, but I would maybe like kind of make the suggestion that you guys talk to coastal about this directly.
Yeah.
We, we received some comments, that's public information. You've seen that. You should probably reach out to the person that gave you those comments and be like, here's the situation, how do you propose that we deal with it?
Yeah.
Right? We, this is what we want to do. Our city said, if coastal says that's cool, great. But I, I just don't know if, that would be my advice to you.
Okay, so I'll say this quickly. You can look at the tape later. They'll want to hear about what you think the prescriptive rights might be, if, if that's at a certain limit. They'll want, they'll want to know if there's a dedicated horizontal easement. I guess there isn't.
No, yeah.
The horizontal is lateral, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't know. That's, so that's a question that they, they want to, they'll want to know about. Rope, the, the, the materials we've read have specified different technologies for what the posts would be. The state lands commission letter says one thing, the staff report says something else. Be straight about what that might be best. One of them says every 20 feet, one says every 40 feet. It seems to me if you're talking about ropes, you know, it's, it's that, okay. Is there an option to fence just around the culvert, the part that's, I think, sounds like it's most problematic to you? There's questions about the material of the rope, like if they're, they're not going to want polypropylene or anything plastic? Just, I'll be twice as quick if you don't keep saying that. What, what is the interface at each end of this property? We haven't really clearly identified. It was touched on what it would attach to, but the public has to get around it. So we don't know what the return sides are exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, I guess we're touched on that.
And so let's call a question.
Might want to talk to that guy over there too. He's got a lot of experience with that stuff.
Yeah, talk to Norm.
And also talk to your, talk to private police and see, even if you get a sign, will they come? Okay, um, okay, so we have a motion to, to continue to October 7th. Can we have a vote, please? Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're now opening the, the, item 7A for Mr. Toomey to give us a spiel.
Commissioner Mazza, thank you. This will be very quick. We're mostly looking for your feedback. It's ultimately a management decision at the end of the day, but we would like to hear your comments on recommendations. Where we have suggested to change our templates or our staff reports is that items or issues or variances that come in front of this policy board that are not clear, where they could really go either way on a recommendation, that is ultimately a policy decision. And so we were going to leave those without a recommendation, but we will still have recommendations on all their staff reports or even things that may be a variance but has clear precedent that that's been allowed. Things that are pretty apparent would still have recommendations to them. We would attach still resolutions for approval in case this body wanted to approve the item so that you could continue, you could keep the process going and not have to delay any further by having to have another item come back. So that is where we've landed as a team to try to help the process and we're open to hearing your, your feedback.
I think it would be good if the policy were flexible enough to say, in some cases, I think you, you started going there, that in some cases, it's, it's really a clear recommendation, you want to, that's where you want to go. In other cases, you might want to say, not just completely open ended, it's all up to you guys, but, but specify, here's a list of pros, here's a list of cons, you know, to try to like specify what you think some of the decision criteria might be. Another thing that could be helpful is to be really clear about where, where is the law versus what are the interpretations and which way that leans. You, you saw tonight with, with both the pool and the ridgeline that, that, you know, there's a, it's a distinction and that when it's an interpretation, it's within our discretion. I mean, precedent counts for something, sure. But what else? I, I also agree, yeah, it would be good if, if there's a way to minimize the number of times that we have to bring it back for, in effect, a second reading, as it were. But I think that's probably unavoidable in some cases if you are going to say, guys, this is a toss-up, you, you could go either way on this one. So I don't know, I'm-
Well, I mean, it's not a, even if, as long as you make some kind of recommendation in that, or make some of the, the findings in there, resolution, should I say, you can give the sort of like disclaimer, not disclaimer, but the, we haven't made a decision on, we're not making a recommendation on this, but if you did, you know, recom, if this is the recommended action, then here's the resolution, right? That would avoid us having to have that come back. Is that correct?
Yes, that is, that's correct.
It's clearly sort of a malleable draft with the intention that we might change a few elements in it.
Correct.
Anything that, the idea that they have to come back to us as a resolution, that's just, I, that really stalls out projects and it expands the time for appeals, all kinds of problems.
I, I-
Expands the time for a project.
I have big problems with basically not using staff's expertise, okay? Essentially, years ago, we used to train our planning commissioners. We gave them manuals, we sent them to classes, et cetera. Now, whenever we have an election, not always, we get new ones, okay? And the tendency is to use opinions rather than facts. And this causes appeals. And what causes, what caused, what the biggest problem with appeals is, they, they waste council's time because we, we'll spend four hours on, or three hours on some complicated thing, six hours on the motel, and then it'll go to council and they're, they're not planners, most of them. It becomes a political thing, then it gets appealed to coastal commission and we waste hundreds of hours of planning, staff time. So it takes a while to know the codes. And quite frankly, the LIP is 248 pages. Our municipal code is a bunch of stuff to know. And then the interpretations are a bunch of stuff to know. So I would rather have a, a, a staff member express well-thought-out opinions. And the, the area I would have, for example, tonight, saying, we can't make a decision on this one because it's so strange and it's obviously, I don't know how we could have made that decision knowing where that was, okay? Nobody could because- Okay, nobody could because the bead height tideline, the coastal commission signs, this, that and the other thing. It's, so somebody who knows what they're doing, somebody with some coastal experience could guide us. And we're not shy saying, no, you're wrong. You're interpreting, like, like tonight, a protrusion on the top of a building is, is an angle. I mean, come on, give me a break. So we're not shy. Where we get into trouble is, for example, where it gets, and this is what I think brought all this up, is like the motel, coming in and saying, well, it's not a coastal bluff, it's a hill. You know, where we consider, or some of us do, going around what the code says by changing words or having your own personal opinion without any backup. Now, a professional planner that's been here a while and knows, knows the coastal thing knows that. That's why the interpretation manual and, and these kinds of things that have been dropped over the years save tons of time and they, they change as, as the politics change. But just to say, well, gee, if I think I'm going to get criticized or this is a close call, if it's a close call, say it's a close call. If you actually believe that the code says it should be this way, it's better for us to have the staff tell us that. As far as I'm concerned. And then this thing about having to bring back resolutions, that costs the applicant 24 days, two weeks if they can be scheduled for the next meeting, and then 10 days appeal period. And then most, and then that gives a lot of time for appeals to appear. And then all of a sudden, they got a year and a half in coastal. And if we can make decisive decisions that are, that are to code and, and from planners who actually consider not leading the way the architect wants them to interpret something and just straight down the line, it'll, it'll be much simpler.
Chair Mazza, we appreciate the comments you made about staff being subject matter experts. We absolutely appreciate that and endorse that, and we hope this body respects that going forward. Staff do spend countless hours and dedication to this craft, to this community. So it's important that we have that and they are not interjecting their opinion, they're interjecting their expertise on the recommendations and the staff reports. So I think what I heard is that you agree with that and I think we are agreeing to go forward with that understanding.
Right, right. And, and, and I think another thing that, that is lacking and that would help us is some of these bigger projects, there's a reluctance to ask for things like traffic studies or, and there's a reluctance to say, for example, and I'm just using, say X Hotel says, we only have two employees, when we know somebody's got to change the bed, somebody's got to, you know, somebody's got to be down at the counter and somebody's got to park the car. So make it, you know, emphasize realism versus, you know, we've approved one building that has maximum occupancy of over 400 people with 38 parking spaces, you know, those kinds of things.
Chair Mazza, I'm going to try to pull you back a little bit onto this one so if we can focus on the staff reports and the recommendations.
Right. And, and, and what I'm saying is, we want the resolutions, we can read them, we can say, instead of having to invent them. And, and it's helpful, like tonight, he said, oh, we're going to put this in, we're going to put that in after they read the coastal letter. The other thing that is really helpful is getting an extra couple of days to read these staff reports. And really, when we get them on Wednesday, you might as well just forget it being a good decision. I mean, as far as I'm concerned.
You know, I have to counter that just a little bit. You have to realize staff are doing their best to try to get it to you with as much leeway. We're trying to get it to the commission much further in advance than the 72 hour requirement that we have, but you have to realize that internally, there's a huge runway to get there. So it's not like staff just started on this and they're, they're up against wire. It takes months of runway for us to actually get to that point.
I understand the runway.
We're trying to do everything we can, but I do want you to be mindful of that and getting it to you Wednesday before Monday is
What I don't understand is
A pretty good amount of time.
If you don't hit the runway, put it off for two weeks. Okay? Because when we don't get, when we get a staff report on a Wednesday night, that means we have to read it, go visit the property and, and ask questions of staff by Friday. And on Friday, not necessarily all staff is there. So we're getting answers on the day of the hearing, which we can't react to. It's just, doesn't work.
Tony, can I jump in?
Yeah.
On that, I have a couple of points, but on that one point, all, we talked about it earlier tonight, if we just implemented a one time, one week delay. And so every, every, now there's a little bit longer period. It's not complicated. We don't have to change anything ever again. That would just give us more lead time. To me, I think one of, I, I agree with most everything that everybody said, but the almost devil's advocate, to me, one of the big problems is I have heard repeatedly from staff, well, you know, I talked to the applicant and they just don't want to say no and they're not really taking, you know, this for an answer and they just want to bring it to you in the way it is. And so, and they're, they're literally intimidated. And so I think it's important to have a resolution, something of a draft, but if the default is always, if the culture is always pointing towards an approval, then staff is going to be like going, well, how do I shoehorn this into an approval to keep the applicant happy?
What you're saying is dangle the staff recommendation as a carrot. Say, you want to get the stack recommendation for approval for this, here are the things that you have to change in the project.
Maybe, maybe
Otherwise, otherwise that's, that, that project is coming forth with no recommendation and a list of concerns that you ought to be paying attention to.
So it gives the staff leverage with the applicant, right? To, to not feel intimidated.
Yeah, you could use the word leverage. I think that our staff does a very good job of conveying that code and sometimes in Malibu, we have
Oh, I, I've heard this many times from staff. They're just like, oh, I've had it up to here with the, you know, I, they just, they don't, they don't take no, blah, 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 blah.
Commissioner Hill through the chair. So it's a delicate balance for staff. They are ultimately a neutral party that are trying to facilitate a property owner, whatever project they want to get done to be per the code. Part of the reason why many of these projects take years is because staff have said no to these applicants. It's constant no. It's no, 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 you can't do it this way. But sometimes what ends up happening is ultimately the property owner's rights to say, no, I want to go with this. It may have variances. I don't agree that you, with staff, I want to take my chances in front of the commissioner council. That's their right. That doesn't mean staff are advocates for this project. They are ultimately a neutral party. And so often we get into this kill the messenger mentality where because staff have brought it forward, that somehow staff are proponents of these projects. That's not the case at all.
Well, I think Skylar, Skylar made a good point about that, though. That, that does
Correct.
Kind of change the dynamic a little bit.
So, but I, I want to get away from this misnomer that somehow staff are intimidated. They, they
Well, they've told me, that's what I've been told.
Well, it, it, they are doing their best effort to try to facilitate the code with their, what we talked about, about their subject matter expertise, which we all agreed, we're going to respect that going forward. So they're doing their absolute best to facilitate that. And at the end of the day, they're a, they're a neutral party. They are, they are not advocates.
I want you to, before you make a decision, go through the last year and see how many projects have variances and then compare it to some other city. Because we tend to do, I don't think I've ever been to a meeting where there weren't more than three or four variances. Okay? Other cities, you don't get them unless there's something really unusual.
I have worked most of my career in coastal cities and I would absolutely disagree with that.
No, I have dealt with another city that's coastal that doesn't give them. All right, cheers on.
For us as a commission to be uniform in regards to our requests, I think what Skylar's recommending, in most cases where possible, if staff can give a recommendation, if they're, you know, some sort of floating scale, there might be a few projects here and there where they will have to leave it up. There are very complicated projects. I could go with that. Has that everyone else?
I would, I would say that pretty much like seven, eight, nine times out of 10, we want to recommend, I, I would like to see a recommendation, you know? Even if the recommendation says, you know, we recommend that this is approved, you could, you need to work through issues X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, or even if it's not a, if it's just delineating what we think the big issues are.
Yeah.
Or if there's no recommendation, why?
Right.
Or, or why not a denial? You know, I mean, those, those, those are fair questions.
Is don't hesitate.
Staff should not rec, not hesitate to recommend denial. You know, like that's something, I, I think that obviously in a perfect world, you're, you're not bringing things forward that you're recommending denial on, you know? But, but the staff should have those teeth when they're dealing with an applicant that's, if you're experiencing the applicant that's pushy and not, I, I couldn't say, I think that most applicants should be kind, you know, to our staff and our staff is very kind to them, which is awesome. I mean, I look at, they're kind of like the customer of the city, right? They're coming in here as a customer to get some service and the city is going to provide that service to them. But if the people aren't being, you know, if they want to build a 30 foot house and we sit, tell them no, and here's the reasons why, well, this is straight, no. Yeah. Or we're recommending this not be approved, which we've, which we've received the best.
Let me, if I can, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, you're not looking this way, so I'll be the vice.
You guys should never look this way.
I look that way.
We need the recommendations. That's all, it's that simple. It's always been there and needs to be done that way. Nobody loves the people that work in this building more than I do. Nobody probably really understands how crappy it is to work here most of the time. It is hard, people are tough, they don't listen, they do say no, this is what I want. And you've told them 40 times that that won't work. Yes, that happens all the time here. It's awful. And the people that work here have done their best. The reason we're in this mess is because we've had a situation with a couple of council members that put us in this mess. So now we don't
It's three council members, not a couple.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking.
You can be shut off by me anytime I want to.
I'm talking.
So don't tell me you can talk.
I am speaking.
I am letting you talk, okay? You become chairman, you do what you want.
I'm talking. So the reason we're in this mess is because of, that's what's happened. So now, I'm sure you're going to have people come up to you and they're going to go, I'm not talking. I'm not going before council on an appeal or something else. I'm not doing that. I'm not going to go through what the other two people have gone through, the other people have gone through, not doing it. So what are you going to do about that when they tell you no? A staff member tells you no because I'm not listening to them. I'm not going to be insulted and they're not going to run me through the town and there's nobody protecting them. So that's what you have to think about. The resolutions and recommendations, that's normal. That's been here for the whole time. That's nothing. It's that other stuff that you have to worry about. So I wish you all the best on that.
And we have a investigation, which we'll find out if that's true, currently being done by a city attorney. So anyway, do you need any more input?
I have another.
Okay.
Yeah. There's, there's another, there's like a time dimension to this one, there's uncertainty that maybe, frame this as a problem and maybe I can get to the solution. One of the things that's most troubling is when we get into something and we've each spent hours looking at it and getting buried in it and then it comes back, oh, we didn't get, we missed this one little thing or we didn't get the whatever report and we're going to have to continue this again. And then we have to come back to it a few weeks or a month later and then re-immers in it again. And I think if there was an appreciation that that can happen, that you could bring a project where you, you appreciate that it's not 100% baked yet and that's all like understood, then we take a first cut at it and we say, let's, you know, maybe we can get to the resolution tonight, but understanding that maybe there, there might be some uncertainty that we need to bring, to, to recognize upfront in the process somehow that there will be some items that are problematic enough, they have to come back twice already.
Well, Craig, I, I, I disagree with that. You should strive to come in.
Maybe I'm not being clear, but
You should strive to come in with a staff report that has the answers in it and you should have enough time for the people who read it, the planning commissioners, to get the questions answered rather than come into a hearing and, and cuff it, basically.
I agree.
Because, and that, because that wastes huge amounts of time and it gets to 11 or 12 o'clock and everybody goes, ah, screw it, just pass it, you know? And then it gets like the case we had on Zumares where it cost a guy a year and a half and $200,000 because it got cuffed. Okay? So we should try, attempt to do everything right. We will do a lot less work, the staff will do a lot less work if the process is allowed to be done correctly.
Well, and I guess my point is, there'll be less work for everybody if we're really feeling like it's ready to come and we can see it once and we're not going to end up seeing it twice then.
Exactly.
So, but I'm saying, so how do we fix that problem?
You do it right the first time.
Rebecca's got her hand up. I was just going to say, whether a project's completely a clean sheet project or not, there's still the whole process that is, you know, the public's right if they, they could appeal a project because they don't like it. It's just the way it is.
Yes, but they, they won't have, too many appeals get, get approved.
I think, I think a lot of these appeals are mostly just politically based, but
Well, that's your opinion, but that's the public's, but eventually, eventually, they, you know, a higher body may play politics, but we shouldn't. Okay? It should be established, we should have planning, planning professionals that tell us what the rules are and what the recommendations are. And if we disagree, we can disagree. But come in and say, well, this one's half baked, why don't you guys tell us what you want to do? That, that just wastes just huge amount of times. Rebecca?
Just as a frame of reference, we, our staff has multiple layers of review. So for instance, on items coming to you on August 19th, the first formal peer review by a senior planner took place on July 3rd or prior to that. And then there's like staggered reviews by multiple individuals. Sometimes in the process of completing all of the reviews, any one of us might notice an inconsistency that would require, when we ask for like how is, why is this inconsistent, then requires additional work by either the case planner or by the applicant to make it consistent across all of the different aspects of it. But staff have, we have templates to deny projects. We do recommend denial in the cases where it simply does not meet the code, but staff analyzes based on the requirements of the code and variances and SPRs are the applicant's way to bring something within code based on those parameters with the LIP. So when they recommend something for approval with multiple SPRs or multiple variances, it has been analyzed by staff based on our existing codes.
No, I understand that. The only thing I am saying is, you have this process that goes along, if you run out of time, don't bring it to a slate. Go another two weeks, do it and finish it because the chances of errors are huge, the chances of, of continuance are huge and you can work on something else. I mean, we, we continue items all the time because we don't have enough time. But that, that period of time where we don't get enough information to make a rational decision is what's causing a lot of problems. And, and then the other thing is, and I assume you still have quack and all that kind of stuff, Zorasis hasn't met in forever. Okay? That's, Zorasis is supposed to be when you get an unresolvable situation. Well, we've had unresolvable situations, piling dirt on top of buildings and, and, you know, all kinds of weird stuff like that. know, all kinds of weird stuff like that, and they haven't been addressed. That saves staff time when they can go and say, Zoraces said this, here's the interpretation. And, and I don't know why Zoraces quit meeting, but it did, and it used to meet quite often. Rebecca first, Rebecca first.
The Zoraces hearings have not taken place recently because of the reduction of staff availability to write the initial analyses to bring things to Zoraces. It's, it's really a matter of even more limited resources today than we had a week ago.
Yeah, and, and I, I, being an ex-businessman, I attribute that to management, because as far as I'm concerned, staff assigned to a Zoraces which will solve many, many problems in the future saves 10 times the hours put into the effort. Drew?
Did we update public comment on this?
Did we open this up?
We didn't have a staff report.
Okay, didn't have a staff report.
It's a planning commission discussion item rather than a public hearing.
So can we let, uh-
I was going to request that we ask Rebecca and Joe if they need any more direction from us, or if they have enough, and we can go home.
I think we heard enough as it pertains to the staff report templates, so we appreciate that.
Okay, I move, will you adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. All favor?
Hi.
I am dedicating the meeting to Rebecca for all the hours she puts in.